Welcome to our February 12th City Council meeting. Please take your seats. Hello, can you hear me? Please take your seats. Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wagner?
Here.
Councilmember Sackler?
Here.
Councilmember Instrom?
Here.
Mayor Morder?
Here. So, councilmembers, let's be aware of what it takes for people to hear us. I don't see the thing lit up, so I'm not sure. Can you all hear me? Okay. Still, we're still fine tuning it. Okay. The green lights are supposed to come on, and they're not talking to me. So, please raise your hand if it gets to a point where you can't hear any of us. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Before we dive into our first agenda item, which is a special presentation, I want to announce a change in the agenda for this evening. I am proposing that we move the library award to the first item. And in so doing, I want to propose that we continue that item to another night and not discuss it tonight. I'd like to be responsive to our Library Tax Advisory Committee's request that we extend the time given for the discussion at City Council and that we consider some of their concerns. And in so doing, then, I would like to appoint what I hope will be a short-term ad hoc of two councilmembers to work with city staff and with the LTAC committee members involved in the library expansion project and the librarian. So again, I want to continue this item. There'll be no discussion tonight, no public comment regarding it because we couldn't act on it if it's no longer on the agenda. So, may I hear a motion from someone?
I'll move to have the City Council continue the Award of Library Architectural and Environmental Agreement to a date to be determined.
I second that.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yes, I would prefer to schedule that sooner rather than later. LTAC's well aware that we put out an RFP. The RFP was quite detailed and specific. We have some responses to that RFP. The timeline extends us out into 2019. We have a project manager ready to move forward, very competent project manager. I would like to see us not delay this because this is important to move forward. You know, we're not going to have a new building. If the drawings are only going to come early 2019, we still have construction to do. So, timeline's long. And yes, you know, given that the timeline's long, you know, I think a couple of weeks won't make a big difference, but I wouldn't want to see us push this out much further. We did all the preliminary work. We got the bids. We chose a group to do that job. And LTAC's well aware that all this has happened. I don't see it necessary to change what the proposal was. We all approved the proposal and how to move forward. And back stepping at this point is only causing a delay. I see that. So, I would prefer, if you want to reschedule it, schedule it sooner.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm surprised, I'm so sorry, it has to come as a surprise, but it does because we can't do our business until we sit here. But I've deliberated on this quite a bit, and I understand your concerns. And I'm sure there's no one who will be involved who wants to extend it beyond what it needs to. So, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of continuing the item to a future date as soon as we can manage it?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. One, four, two, one opposed. Thank you. Okay, having done that, then, those of you who are maybe here because of the library item are of course welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like, we won't take it personally if you would like to leave. Okay. Now, I'd like to welcome the presenters from the U.S. Forest Service, the local Shasta, let's see if I can get the name right. It used to be the Mount Shasta Ranger District. Now, it is the Shasta McLeod Management Unit. And we have a couple of speakers, Nisha Van Hees and Josiah Obst, Obst, who are here to talk about the Everett Memorial Thinning Project. And let me, just before you start, this was a request by another councilmember, which I was happy to follow up on. Because of my interest in bringing issues that involve, that affect all of us in the community before us, even though they are not within the purview of City Council, we of course have an opportunity to comment. But being as how our surrounding area is so important to all of us, I thought it would be a good presentation to hear more about what these folks have in mind and that they've already presented to the community. But for those of you who were not able to make that meeting, hopefully this information will be helpful. Okay, go ahead. Nisha and Josiah.
Thank you. Yeah, hi. So, my name's Nisha Van Hees.
Wait, you need to speak into this, Nisha.
Speak into the microphone. Thank you for the reminder. Yeah, so I'm the district culturist and the silvoculturist on this particular project. And Josiah is our fuels planner for this project. We thank you very much for the invitation to speak to you tonight about the project. As you can see up on the screen, we have a presentation prepared for you, if I can direct your attention. And we'll try not to take up too much of your time. And with that, we just want to say that this project has been developed in order to increase forest resilience and health and resilience to insect and disease specifically. There's a new category that we have been authorized to treat forests with, under the 2014 Farm Bill, Section 8204, if you wish. But essentially, what it allows us to do is to move a little quicker and focus our treatments on areas that have high need to treat to produce more resilience to insect and disease. So, the McBride Plantations project, you can see up here, there's a couple of photographs. It's not real clear, but we're looking at an area that is, let me get to the right slide here real quick. Okay, so if you see here, there's Black Butte, and there's, off to the east of Black Butte is our project area. We've got approximately 3,000 acres that we're proposing to treat under this project. And this area was all established as plantations in the '30s, '40s, and '50s, and a little bit in the '90s, some of the trees were planted. This area was entirely fields of brush. And the Forest Service, back in the '30s, '40s, '50s, converted this whole area from fields of manzanita and brush into plantations. And so, what we have today are overdense stands, plantations. They've received some management. What we're proposing here under this project is to do some actual commercial harvest. The trees are old enough now and large enough that we can, hopefully, you know, we can get this through our process and provide a commercial product out of it. The plantations were planted with ponderosa pine and Jeffrey pine mostly. There was a little bit of Douglas fir and since cedar sugar pine planted, but they didn't make it. There's some natural components as well of incense cedar. And I mentioned the Douglas fir. There's a little bit of red fur way up high, but it doesn't really get into our project area. So, what we've got going on out here is, well, let me back up. I'm getting way ahead of myself. So, with the Farm Bill, we have the authority to treat these acres. And we proposed 3,000 acres, which is what we're allowed to treat as a maximum under this process. Got the project area. The project area is currently under stress. We're experiencing some insect and disease problems. Mostly, the insects are from western pine beetle. And there's a few ipps out there. We don't have a real huge problem yet, but this area is set up for high mortality, especially if we go back into drought conditions. So, a couple of parameters that we are limited by or held to is to maximize old growth in large trees, to consider the best available science, and to develop the project through a collaborative process. The responsible official for this project, or the deciding official, is the district ranger. And she's opted to use a non-exclusive, transparent collaborative process, including diverse, involving diverse interests. Skip through that. We showed you the general location. So, this map is just a project map. And what this shows is, in the green and the gray-ish, got a little pointer here, we've got, even these gray areas are proposed for treatment as well, just not the white or the gray outside of Forest Service property. So, you can kind of see the crosshatched line. That's our project area boundary, okay? So, the stands are between 26 and 73 years old. The trees were planted to convert the dense brush fields after fires that came in the early 1900s. And the plantations are currently between 120 to 230 trees per acre, which is too dense for a healthy forest. Forest plan designations for this project area are, we are in matrix land and Management Area 3, which is for Mount Shasta. We've got some rotted recreation prescription and just a real small amount of riparian reserves in this. Matrix land allocation, for those of you that might not know what that means to us, is that this area is open for us to treat as a working forest and to remove products to support our local communities. And all of that project is in that designation. I just talked about that. Essentially, what we're after, I mentioned already, we're looking to create healthier conditions. The forest is overdense. We're talking about right now, thinning down, the plan is to thin down to 60 trees per acre. Currently, we're, our stands are stocked at upwards of 350 trees per acre in the maximum situations. So, that's not ideal. They're causing inner tree competition. These stand conditions are amongst other things. There's only so much competition, you know, only so much light water and nutrients, and we need to try to provide more to grow a large forest out there. So, the trees are currently vulnerable to insect and disease. Tree mortality is currently evident. We talked about that a little bit. And then, one other unique factor about this project area was the folks, back in the day when these plantations were created, did this process called windrowing. And if you folks have been out in the area, you may have seen these large rows of soil, mounds, and they just are long lines in the plantations. Well, what they did was they took bulldozers and they bulldozed the brush out of the way and mounted it off into rows so they could plant in the middle because the brush was, you know, eight, 10 feet high at the time. And we do have some interesting photographs of that. If any of you ever wanted to see those, give me a call. So, the windrows essentially is the topsoil that was mounted up into rows. And what we're proposing to do in some of the areas where the windrows are largest is to spread those back out after the harvest treatment. And that'll give us a bonus of not only spreading out the soil so it can do what it's supposed to be doing, but it will also treat some of our hazardous fuels. It'll, you know, kill some of the brush as well for us. So, now we get into the wildland-urban interface. And I'm going to pass this over to Josiah for a minute.
And folks, you're about halfway through the time that you have. Hopefully, that'll work for you.
Yeah, yeah. So, I could go really quick then and be done. Is that what I'm hearing? So, the WUI, so the Forest Service, of course, loves acronyms. And so, the WUI stands for Wildland Urban Interface. And that's basically where the houses and homes meet the forest. And so, our goal is to establish an area where we can stop fires in their smaller sizes. And so, part of the project is we want to reduce some of the fuel loading that's out there. So, with this project, our goal is to establish, you know, a safer anchor point for the community. So, this is going to rehash some of the stuff that Nisha had already said. You know, the area surrounding the project is overdense with brush trees and a number of different fuels for fire. The area, again, is approximately, actually, almost 3,000. It's a little bit more than that 2,600 acres. That's up on the slide there. And the problem that we have, if you guys haven't heard of it, let me, okay. So, I'm going to describe ladder fuels. So, hopefully, you guys have heard the term ladder fuels. If you haven't, basically, it's just that. It's the surface fuels that lead up to the tree canopy. So, start off with grass, then you end up in some brush, manzanita or buck brush, whatever it is. And then, it ends up into the crowns of the trees. And so, what fire can do is it can start on the surface and then work its way to the top of the canopies of the trees. And then, you'll get, you know, potentially catastrophic fires where it takes out the whole trees, and it's very hard to stop. With our equipment, and we can be pretty effective at that four-to-six-foot flame length, which is, you know, something that you'd get off some grass and brush. But once it gets up into the canopy, it's a lot more difficult to contain and stop. And so, we have had some fires in the plantations in the past. So, with the amount of folks that are in there, it poses a potential danger to the community there. So, this goes into the bark beetle, and I'll take it back to Nish.
Thank you. So, just real quick, what this map is showing is, this is a risk map. The red is that we've got greater than 35% mortality predicted for the area. And this was back in 2012. We have had some recovery since 2012. 2012, we were in the drought. And we stayed there until about 2015 and started coming out of it a little bit, just roughly. This map, again, is back to, this is just showing the wildland-urban interface. And where, another reason we're focusing our treatment in this area, it's, you know, obviously adjacent to I-5 and the Mount Shasta City. Bark beetles, we talked quite a bit about that already, but essentially, we've got western pine beetle. And they, you know, with the drought and the way that things are going right now, they're ready to have a party out there. These are just some signs we're finding out there in the stands that we do have the galleries and the pitch tubes and some mortality. This is a shot of, I think it's Bass Lake down south of here. That's not Lake Siskiyou. But this is potentially what we're looking at, is, you know, we'd like to try to avoid some of this horrible mortality that's going on in, like, the Sierras. So, some of our risk factors, we talked about already. The high risk of bark beetles. We've got all of these conditions going on. Dry site conditions, a history of tree stress, and the stands are overstocked. Our objectives, we talked about already, reducing risk of wildfire in the wildland-urban interface is a big one for us. As you all may know, we have a high influx of folks recreating out in the area aside from folks kind of camping in the area, too. So, we are trying to alleviate some of the hazard or the risk there by the fuels treatments we're doing. We intend to use the best available science by thinning, creating some openings, releasing the trees so that they can grow better. We're not going to be doing any interplanting. I don't know why that's up there. And then, some underburning is proposed. So, the initial proposal, the actual work we're proposing to do right now is to thin down to 60 trees per acre, approximately. Prune, masticate the brush and/or machine or hand pile the brush, whatever needs to happen there to manage that brush before we set, you know, do any kind of prescribed fire treatments. We do also have a fuel break proposed out there along, let me find the map here, along the Om Shasta Road. Watch your eyes. Where's my map? Okay, down at the bottom, along the Om Shasta Road and the Gateway Trail Road, we're proposing to construct 200-foot-wide fuel break. And it goes up this little blip here. So, what that means is we would just maintain it more so that we have a better place to control fire from if we need to. Let me get back over here real quick. How's our time?
You're actually out of it. If you could let us know what the timing of this is and where we are outside the scoping response process, yeah.
Certainly. So, we're currently, the public comment period ended on February 5th. However, if the council has something for us, we'd be happy to see that or hear from you. We did receive quite a few comments from the public, and they're good. And we were developing our project with those in mind. And we essentially intend to have a decision by mid-April. And the project itself would occur? The project would be implemented if all goes the way we think by the end of this fiscal year, which for us ends September 30th. We would award a contract to implement, yeah.
Thank you so much. I wonder if there are any questions from councilmembers of Nisha or Josiah?
Is this the beetle that was in Colorado that destroyed so many trees?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it was unbelievable how many trees it took out there.
Yes, there's been a couple over there, but, yeah, western pine beetle, yes.
And is there much of a market for that kind of timber that's in there? Or is it just pretty much slash burn type?
Well, we do have a small market for it. It can provide a market for chips, for hog fuel, you know, Cogen plants out at Burnie. Unfortunately, we lost the one in Waireka. But, so for biomass, yes. We do have some sawlog-sized material in the project. I don't, you know, the purchaser would decide what they want to do with the product themselves. We do have sawlog-sized timber, which is 10 inches in larger diameter.
Okay, seeing no more questions, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. I hope it was informative to those of you in the audience.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thanks very much. Okay. Okay, this is the time now to go to public comment. For any of those of you who would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda, this would be anything, again, not on the agenda, or if you see something in the consent agenda you'd like to comment on, please let me know, and you're welcome to come up now. I see several people who would like to comment now. So, John Kennedy, you are the first one.
Good evening. My name is John Kennedy. I live here in Mount Shasta. I'm really concerned about the Crystal Geyser use permit and that we have ended up delaying this thing. The delay, I thought, would maybe be carried over to this week, but it looks like it's going to be delayed again. If I'm not mistaken, three or four years ago, we had the possibility of getting $3.3 million from Crystal Geyser when they hooked up to their sewer system. And in addition to that, we were going to get a $3 million grant that the council, which most of you weren't on, I think there were two of you maybe were on this, that delayed, kept delaying, and the project. And finally, the grant was lost because the people there didn't want to deal with what was going on here in Mount Shasta. And I'm afraid that we're back in the same situation right here. We have a chance to get $1.4 million to upgrade the sewer line going down to the waste treatment plant. And that not only affects maybe Crystal Geyser, but it affects a lot of the building that we want to do here in the community, which we haven't had hardly any building in the last almost 30 years. And we've only had maybe one or two commercial buildings that have been built. And we're looking at trying to get in some low-income housing. It's going to affect that. We need to get moving with this project here. That $1.4 million will upgrade that sewer that go in there. You're going to also get $60,000 a year, probably, in the fees that Crystal Geyser will be paying to the city. If you spread that out over 10 years, you've got $600,000. You guys have really got to get moving on this project because I'm afraid you're going to be in the same boat that you did with the $3 million. You're going to lose that $1.4 million. And we're not going to be able to do anything that we want to do here in this community, like build new homes, promote new businesses coming in, bring in low-income housing. You're not going to be able to do all that stuff unless you guys get some money. And this is one way to get things moving. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dan Axelrod, next.
The proposed wastewater agreement supposedly limits the effluent to 24,000 gallons per day. What happens if CG exceeds that 24,000? The agreement clearly states what happens. CG gets a maximum civil penalty of $6,000 a day. Let's do some arithmetic to see if CG can afford that. Let's say CG violates the limit and doubles their effluent to 50,000 gallons a day, maybe by producing twice as much product as they say they will. CG can then produce an extra 1 million bottles per day. Industry analysts say that the profit on each bottle sold is about 35%. And at $1 a bottle, CG takes home a profit of $350,000 a day. For CG violating the agreement and paying $6,000 in exchange for making $350,000, well, it's a good deal. And the more effluent they produce beyond- And the more effluent they produce beyond what is allowed, the more money they make. That $6,000 is not a penalty, it's an invitation to violate. So instead of financial penalties, maybe we need to rely on trust. Unfortunately, CG has not done well in the trust department. They originally paid a hydrologist to tell the community in the Chamber of Commerce, based on no evidence, that the water that they tap into was heading west toward Big Springs, and Big Springs had a more than adequate flow rate. The FEIR says now, no, the water is heading south, not west. CG says that a previous tracer test proved their well water heads toward Big Springs. The actual test results show that only about 5% of the water does so. CG originally claimed that their deep production wells aquifer was not connected to the shallow aquifer used by local residences. The FEIR now says there is a connection. CG told everyone that their pumping would be insignificant compared to what's available, but the FEIR let it slip that CG would be using more than 10 times, 10 times, the amount of water than is used by the more than 82 residences nearby, all put together every day. CG originally said that they would have 750,000 gallons of day, per day of effluent. Now it has fallen miraculously to just under the $25,000, sorry, $25,000 gallons that just happened to define a significant industrial user and might thereby trigger a whole new set of EPA pre-treatment requirements. CG says that they can put excess effluent onto their leach field if the city will not accept it, but this might pollute an aquifer that the city plans to tap a new well for.
Dan, I'm sorry.
Oh, what do you know? I'll have to finish this some other time, huh?
You can always send it to us. Sorry, thank you. Next, Bruce Hillman.
Bruce Hillman, Mount Shasta. I would like to point out that we consider that the current Crystal EIR is not compliant with CEQA, and because of this, Water and the Winnebago Winntu Tribe have filed a petition of writ of mandate to challenge the approval of the EIR. We would like to respectfully point out that the comments on the flaws in the EIR are included in the EIR and should be carefully considered by the city before it grants an industrial user permit. On September 20th of last year, the city filed a comment letter to the County Planning Commission, raising many of the city's still outstanding issues over the approval of that EIR. And then on November 13th, the City Council voted to reaffirm that the issues raised in that letter were still the city's position and would be, the city would continue to negotiate with the county and Crystal Geyser on these issues. However, almost all of the issues raised by the city in its comments on the industrial user hookup that were released in the February 5th Special Meeting Agenda Packet, none of those issues are addressed in that permit that was released in that packet. In its September 20th comments, the city requested a mitigation for the lighting plan to reduce light pollution at the plant and that this be reviewed by the city. This was not done. The city said that the EIR did not address the potential impacts of the project on the city's future municipal and cumulative impacts associated with the future well and residential development. This is still not addressed. The city requested a mitigation be included to require data collection program to determine Crystal Geyser's impacts on the aquifer and homeowners' wells, and the results of this be provided to the public. This was not done. Probably as its most important issue, the city requested that no discharge to the leach field be allowed, and option one, be recommended, the recommended mitigation. This was not done. And most disturbingly, the city's proposed industrial user permit still allows Crystal Geyser to discharge industrial rinse water into our local aquifer. This is a real threat to our pristine aquifer and must be prevented. The contents of the industrial rinse water are bad enough, but it is, we are also just one wrong valve turn away from a major irreversible pollution of our local aquifer. No discharge to the leach field should be a bottom line for the city. And all of these issues must be addressed as any permit granted to Crystal Geyser. And so my question is, what has been the results of these negotiations with Crystal Geyser and the county, and why aren't they part of the Crystal Geyser permit application? When this permit does come up by a decision of this body, we hope that all of these issues will be addressed so we can protect our community and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Geneva Omen.
Geneva Omen, Hammond Ranch. I also want to comment with regard to the wastewater treatment application, and again, point out that the EIR for that Crystal Geyser project does not comply with CEQA and is being legally challenged. The FEIR is flawed and is not a good source, a resource to use as a basis for making decisions related to plant operations. Many of the city's and citizens' concerns were not adequately addressed in the FEIR, and there are no indications that the city's concerns, as expressed in that September 20th letter, are being addressed anywhere. Secondly, I'd like to focus specifically on the permit. It seems to me to have multiple deficiencies and loopholes that will leave the city vulnerable to negative impacts. I can't cover all of them in three minutes, so let me just point out one example. Section F is the notification of discharge of hazardous waste. It's inherently contradictory. It says, "This permit does not authorize permitty to discharge hazardous waste to the POTW." So great, no hazardous waste goes in, except, it then goes on to describe all of the ways they can, they can go ahead and put hazardous waste into the wastewater treatment system. It says, "In the event of unauthorized discharge of hazardous waste to the POTW, accidental or otherwise, the permitty is subject to the following additional requirements." Accidental or otherwise? What is otherwise? If it's not accidental, it seems to imply it's planned. So those additional requirements involve reporting, reporting what they dump. If they dump more than 100 kilograms of hazardous waste per month, then even more reporting is required. Reporting, okay, but wait, let me quote again. "Dischargers are exempt from the requirements of the paragraph above during a calendar month in which they discharge no more than 15 kilograms of hazardous waste." So they can dump waste without reporting it, okay? It goes on to explain that discharge of more than 15 kilograms of hazardous waste requires a one-time notification. And then I quote, "Subsequent months during which the permitty discharges more than such quantities of any hazardous waste do not require additional notification." They can keep on dumping the stuff, okay? It's basically a statement that they can keep on dumping the stuff. Notice how the city wants. But then there is a qualification. If any notification is made under this section, the permitty must certify that it has a program in place to reduce the volume and toxicity of hazardous waste generated to the degree it has determined to be economically practical. They get to determine whether or not it's economically practical for them. The economic interests of the permitty outweigh the interests of the city. I think this section and every section of this permit needs to be looked at really seriously and thoroughly to make sure the city is not being left vulnerable and responsible for the negative impacts of this.
Thank you, Geneva.
Thank you.
Jim Cross.
Madam Mayor, City Councilpeople, staff, I'm Jim Cross. My family moved here in 1946, and I've had a business in Mount Shasta for over 58 years. We're also the closest neighbor to Crystal Geyser Plant. So by being there, I've also been the closest neighbor to every business that's been on that parcel, including Cooper's Mill and P&amp;M Cedar, both of which were fair neighbors. We're also neighbors to Dannen when the water company was open, and they were great neighbors. Yet the thing that I would like to say is, is that all my dealings with Crystal Geyser have been on a good, positive note. They seem truly concerned about the community, and I'd hate to see us get paralysis through analysis. I don't know how long you're going to study this before you can make a decision. I applaud you on being in the positions you're in. It's easy for us to sit in the audience and be Monday morning quarterbacks, but you guys are on the front line, and I appreciate what you do. And I hope that we can bring another good neighbor into Mount Shasta that will help us with our cash flow problems and superstructure improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Rosalyn McCoy.
Rosalyn McCoy, Mount Shasta. We were promised to have a developers' agreement, and it was going to lay out how Crystal Geyser and Mount Shasta were going to set up our operation together. That is, it hasn't been presented. And tonight, from John Kennedy, we finally hear some numbers. Why wasn't this laid out in the permit of how much Crystal Geyser was going to pay for hookup? Isn't that like a bottom-line issue? I don't understand that, did you not spend time reading this document? John, I mean, you are an intelligent person. To review this document, I brought up how it said that 24,000 could be released out of each line. And I wrote to the city about it, and it's like, is this going to be taken care of? We've had lots of time, like they've all said, we had time. So why isn't this a really good document by now? We, the citizens, shouldn't need to come to you and say, "There's significant errors in this." I know we have good staff. You're all intelligent people, as long as you actually read the documents. I hope you will really do that and listen to your community, and it's not that we want to slow this down, but we need to be in a good position. We can't just shake hands and have a good old boy system that this corporation's going to do good things because they seem to be righteous. We get it in writing, and we have a clear, firm agreement. 180 days to correct problems with poisoning the water? That sounds insane. I mean, I don't, I don't quite understand. You're all really intelligent people. We can do better than this in a timely manner.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Mike Brown.
Hello, Mike Brown, Mount Shasta. I live outside the city. I'm here, I met with the city manager, Bruce Pope, the other day there to clarify some questions, because I thought the last meeting was really kind of a bust, and I think we're better than that. I listened to Kenny talk, he kind of clarified some stuff. Bruce talked, clarified some stuff. The way I understand it, everything kind of comes through them, they get the information, they interpret it, and they're going to send an opinion to the council. So I don't know what happened last week, why we got caught up in this quandary. I tried to talk to some people to try to get the information, why we got into this delay mode. As far as I know, talking to Bruce the other, last week was, there, the city's in favor of moving this forward. We have the information, and the questions should be answered. If we don't have the questions, then these guys are here to answer those questions. So I would think tonight, when you guys move forward here after we're done, to go into closed session, there's five of you, and I'm sure you probably debated it amongst yourselves, or whatever what it is, the information that he has is what we're discussing. Now, I hear all these other items come up, well, we need this, and we got to do this, and we got to do that. This is their job. This is what they do to bring that information to you. I think we got to get by all that rhetoric stuff and say, "Let's stay on focus and move forward." So hopefully tonight, you guys, after this meeting's over, you can get together, have an opinion, and hopefully it comes out in the direction we need to go with Crystal Geyser. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I have no more who have signed up at this point on this item, but if there are those of you who would like to add your comments, please, you're welcome. Dorian.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Morder, and council members. I'm just here tonight to again advocate that you guys conclude the issuance of the permit and get the process completed. This process goes back to Jeff Harkness and Jeffrey Collings. This is not a new agreement. This is not something that needs to be blackmailing Crystal Geyser over. Let's get this thing rolling. They're going to be a great revenue source for the city. We need the infrastructure. It's time to move on. I am so tired of hearing how flawed the EIR is, how flawed everybody else's professional opinions are, except for those in the audience that appear to have higher degrees and higher understandings of things. It's time to move on. Our city is in need of some progress. It's all going to South Weed. We're going to sit here and continue to delay and try to blackmail Crystal Geyser, and it's going to hurt us. So please make your decision. I just want to see what the vote comes out. I want to hear a vote out of you folks and get this permit done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorian. Other comments? Okay, lots of frustration expressed on both sides. We will do our best. Geneva?
Can I ask a question about protocol?
Sure, quickly.
You know, we've had a couple of meetings now, and I've seen something similar happening at city councils in Weed, city council meetings in Weed, where something is on the agenda, people show up and they want to comment, and then it's dropped off the agenda, and people aren't allowed to comment about that segment. And it seems to me, if it's dropped from the agenda, that topic then should be available for public comment on non-agenda items.
That's a good question.
So that people who have shown up to comment get the opportunity to do that.
That's a very good ques-- okay, that's a good question. Thank you for asking. I guess I didn't say it clearly. If there is someone here who wants to speak to an item that, tonight, that we discontinued to another meeting, you may, under this section of the agenda. However, we can't take it under consideration because it's no longer on the agenda. When we do put it on the agenda as soon as possible, there'll be ample public comment during that agenda time. So it's not intended, I know it's, I know it's very inconvenient, and I hesitate to do it. It's not a best management practice by any means. I was, I was convinced that it was the best decision for the city of Mount Shasta to postpone the library item tonight, and in gen--
Are you questioning whether a person can comment?
If there's someone in the audience tonight who wants to speak to an item that was just dropped off of it, you may, under this period of time, right now.
Are you questioning whether a person can comment?
If I didn't say that earlier, I misspoke.
Are you questioning whether a person can comment?
Yeah. So is there anyone who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda now, either because we didn't put it on there to begin with, or because we discontinued it until a future item? Okay, thanks for the clarification, Geneva.
We'll have to clean up protocol, too, because last week, last meeting, we, when we took the EIR permit, the wastewater, sorry, the wastewater treatment permit off the agenda, we also took the public comment off the agenda. So let's try to clean up, figure out which way we're going to go. Do you understand what I'm saying?
You mean, I didn't permit people to speak to it who had shown up under this portion of the-- of the agenda now? I didn't, did anybody ask, and I said, no, you may not?
I asked specifically what happens to the public comment for that agenda, and it was said it goes away. That was the response.
Okay, well, maybe I misunderstood you. If I did, I'm sorry. But what is true here, and Mr. Kenny can correct me if I'm wrong, but what's true here is that we will take, we can't act on anything we hear today based on that item, so we might as well, we might as well continue it to the agenda when we do hear the item. But if somebody does want to speak to it now, under this section of public comment, you may do so. John?
There's two opportunities for public comment. One is for matters that are not on the agenda, and of course, you can't, the public can comment. The city council cannot discuss or take action. That's for matters that aren't on the agenda, which we just completed, I think. For matters that are on the agenda, the public has a right to comment before action is taken. So I don't know what the complaint is.
It was just a specific, if you actually, at the beginning of a meeting, if you drop an agenda item.
Well, if you drop an agenda item--
Then people could comment at the public comment.
Yeah, right.
My apologies if I misconstrued that at the last meeting. I certainly didn't intend to. I'm sorry, Barbara, if that's what I left it out, so. Okay, so we've cleared it up now. Is it clear? Okay. Okay. Ah, where are we at? Okay, we're moving on now to item number six, council and staff comments. Bruce, have you anything to share with us?
I would ask council's consideration of--
I can't hear you, Tim.
I'd ask council's consideration in possibly taking up the closed-session matter out of order. We've got John Kenny here from Redding. That's the only matter that he is here on.
Yes.
And it may make sense to take that up out of order. He is from Redding, number one. Number two, we're paying him, what is it, $150 an hour while he is here.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Is this my call?
Well, this, if I understand it correctly, council member Sterns basically made a motion to reorder the agenda, move this forward with consideration of taking the closed session early in the meeting as opposed to the end of the meeting. That's a motion. It would require a second and a vote of council to do that.
I was really asking for council consensus. But if there's not consensus, I will make a motion. And do--
I, you don't have consensus from me at this point.
Okay, so I--
Given the number of people in the audience.
I make a motion to take the closed-session item out of order.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So it was a sensible motion in terms of expending city money and having our staff have to spend more time here before you travel home to Redding. We will make the meeting as efficient as possible. Council, or city manager Bruce, any staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Morder, members of the council. So since our last meeting, we have, as a staff base, has been working on certain items and proposals. Council member Sterns and I engaged in a conference call with Bay Area Economics regarding their past efforts in Mount Shasta on affordable housing. I felt that meeting was quite informative. We've had a follow-up phone call with them, and we'll be pursuing some possible alternatives that they brought to our attention, and be including that in our housing discussions. We've been, we have begun preliminary discussions with one additional development company out of the Chico area of California that expressed an interest in development of the landing. So we're trying to encourage them to put their proposal together, so if we do get proposals March, April this year, hopefully we could have three for consideration by the council. We've also been working at a staff level with the developer, the proposed mini-storage up in North Mount Shasta Boulevard in Skirun, and we're holding further meetings that clarify the conditions and getting a complete application in on that project so we could move it for We did, in fact, draft a traffic mitigation agreement. We sent that to Crystal Geyser. We were informed by Crystal Geyser they could not comment on it because we are represented by council, Mr. Kenny. And so I forwarded the agreement to Mr. Kenny. Mr. Kenny is our attorney, then forwarded it to Crystal Geyser's attorney, and that's where it sets. We hope to hear back from them. And we have received the final edited version of the CTC report on broadband. We will be scheduling a meeting with the three cities ad hoc committees for determination where we go and what our final recommendation to CTC will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of Bruce.
Bruce, the traffic mitigation draft agreement, is that a revised draft from the one that you previously circulated?
Is correct.
Okay.
Other questions of Bruce? Other staff report? Council comments? John, have you anything? Paul? Barbara?
Yeah, I heard a lot of number comments on the Crystal Geyser situation, and last week, we had a meeting. Three of the five of us took our attorney's advice to proceed. It's very important, if you have a city attorney, if you can, listen to his advice, because we're trying to avoid litigation, bottom line. So we took his advice. There were two council members that were opposed to attorney's advice, which concerns me, because that's happened a number of times now. But ideally, you know, you want to rely on your staff and your city attorney to help advise you. That's why they're there, the professionals. So I just wanted to tell you why we took the action we did last week. We were taking the advice of our attorney.
Thank you. And Tim, any comments?
No comment.
No comment. Okay. And neither do I, so we'll move on now to council, city council agenda, consent agenda.
And request that 7F be pulled from the consent agenda?
Which one?
7F.
7F. Okay, and--
With the exception of that, I would move approval of 7A through E and H.
I'll second that with a slight modification.
What would that be?
There's a little typo on the meetings of the January 22 special meeting. The start time's 5:00, not 5:30. That's all.
Okay, we have a suggestion that we pull--
The moving party accepts the amendment.
I'm sorry?
The moving party accepts the amendment.
The 5:30 to 5:00 amendment? Yes. Is there a second to Tim's suggestion that we pull item number F from the consent agenda?
We've never required a second for pulling an item from consent agenda--
We don't?
--for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Okay. So there's been a request that we pull it. I will pull it, and we'll proceed then with items A through H excluding number F, which I will now read. Item number A, approval of minutes, January 22, 2018, regular and special city council meeting minutes. B, acceptance of Brown Act committee minutes, downtown enhancement advisory committee, November 15, 2017. C, approval of disbursements, accounts payable 118, 124, and 131 of 18, and total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending 114 of 18. D, authorizing county of Siskiyou to apply for a regional Cal recycle grant. E, the last, best, and final offer relating to the bargaining unit representing police officers. And lastly, number H, approve, a submittal of a letter of opposition in regards to Senate Bill 827. May I hear a motion?
I move that the council approve consent agenda numbers A, B, C, D, E, and H.
Is there a second?
I think there was already a motion and a second. But that's fine. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
I thought, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on now to item number eight, establishment of an MOU with the fire department. May we have a staff report, please?
We can take it up.
What?
Don't forget about F.
Would you like to take care of that now?
No, no, I--
It's a future agenda item?
There was a staff member who simply asked about it, and we can take up eight now and 7F at the mayor's direction.
I'd like to see how long the evening goes tonight, and we can decide, based on that, whether we tack it on to the end of this agenda, or we put it on a future agenda item. Thank you.
It's not time-sensitive? It's not time-sensitive?
No, it isn't time-sensitive.
It's not. Thanks, though. Okay, now, Chief Mello, it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have a quite lengthy staff report. I'm not quite sure how council wants to proceed with this, if you want to take it in sections, because we have a couple speakers at the end of my report that wants to come up and talk a little bit. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, is go through the background a little bit, and then take each individual item and ask questions and answers then, if council wants to do that.
Good idea.
Okay. So tonight, before you, is a, we need a little bit of direction from the city council to establish an MOU for the fire department, that we're having some difficulties with coverage, some overtime problems, and problems with decreasing numbers of volunteers. So a little bit of background, the fire department was established in October of 1924. The first paid chief was hired in 1970. The next paid position was assistant chief in 2008. In 2016, the city and the Mount Shasta Fire Protection joined under one common name as the Mount Shasta Fire Department. The district does reimburse the city on a quarterly basis for a portion of the cost of employees. Why this was done is to make better use of resources, equipment, recruitment, and training. One of the biggest primary reasons was for the declining number of volunteers. Either department could be efficient. Today, the department consists of two chiefs, a battalion chief, two paid fire captains, and 10 volunteers. We respond, excuse me, we're responsible for over 60 miles, square miles, within the city and the county. We also have four stations, seven fire engines, two water tenders, a rescue, and four support vehicles. These need daily checkouts, which is very time-consuming, and that's what the paid staff does every morning. We are a combination fire department, which means we're volunteer and paid. We're an all-risk department, which means we respond to everything from structured fires to elliptics, to changing smoke alarms, whatever we need to do. We do rely heavily on volunteers for the 7,300 residents that we have in our community. In the summertime, approximately 20,000, it grows to 20,000 in the summer months. Over the last few years, the calls for service have increased, let me start over. I apologize. We've been up late. Over the last few years, the calls for service have increased, and the number of people willing to volunteer has decreased. In 2012, we had 541 calls with 28 volunteers and two paid staff. In 2017, we ran 904 calls with 10 volunteers and five paid staff. The department now is experiencing such issues, and is asking for guidance on a few different things. One of them is volunteer explorers, written overtime policy, pay, work schedule, staffing opportunities, and fundraising and revenue. So I'd like to go into the volunteers at this time. We have taken many avenues to try to recruit volunteers. We've gone to the high school, SISN. We've done career days, both at the high school and the college. We went door-to-door with flyers. We've done mass emails. We have gotten a few volunteers, but by the time they get here and go through the background check, medical, all that, they either lose interest or find out that they don't have the time to do the training. This trend is not just in the fire department. It's nationwide, throughout everything. We even had a shortage of Santa Clauses this year, according to the national standards for volunteers.
You even had what?
We had a shortage of volunteer Santa Clauses this year. That's a serious--
That's serious.
It's serious. So again, individuals have to balance their day to become a volunteer between work, family, and volunteer time. The minimum, 120 hours for basic fire behavior, CPR, AED, and basic first aid is a primary training you have to have before you can even respond to a call. That doesn't include the additional 56 hours of training that's required to meet state requirements annually. This also doesn't include wildland training, which is 36 hours a year with 7 hours of annual training. Again, most of our training does happen on the fire grounds. They have to be supervised by qualified staff, which could be, can be volunteer or paid staff. This, again, is kind of a hindrance on the people that are qualified when we have a working fire, because we have to set them in the background so they don't get hurt, if that makes sense. The other thing that was brought to our attention over this last few months was the background checks. The police would, the city has fairly strict background check policies for volunteers for the fire department. It can take anywhere from six to eight weeks to get done. A lot of people don't want to wait that long. They want to come in and volunteer and get their feet wet and get going. When that happens, we've lost more people doing that, so that is something, from the city council standpoint, we need to come back and review. There is, you know, the issue with drug testing, the credit checks, and the typical background check that we do do. Again, that's the end of the volunteers. Is there any questions that we can answer at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
We could go to questions, and then what I'd like to do is ask the two people who signed up, whether you'd like to speak to volunteers, or whether you'd want to wait till later in the agenda where your comments are more specific to that part of the discussion. So go ahead, Tim.
Ma'am, I noticed that only people who are in the 96067 ZIP code are eligible to volunteer. And I'm wondering about that restriction, because when I went online and looked at various fire departments, some encouraged volunteers from 50 miles-- fire departments, some encourage volunteers from a, from 50 miles away, 50 mile radius, which would take in Doesmir, McLeod, Weed areas.
Correct.
So, maybe somebody doesn't want to be on the fire department in Weed, but they'd love to be, to volunteer in Mount Shasta.
Yeah, most of the research we've done on volunteers, they have sleeping quarters. We don't have that in Mount Shasta. So, i- if they come in, they typically do a 24-hour shift and get a stipend pay, which we're going to go into that here in a little bit. But that's where the volunteer's coming from, because if they live 50 miles away, we have a call at midnight, they're not going to come. If they do, by the time they get here, they're, it's going to be over with. So, that's the reasoning behind that. Danny, or, excuse me, Chief Padilla, we're fairly close in the South County. The Weed chief, Shastina, they're all having the same issues we're having. They got 20, 25 on the books, but they have the core group of, you know, five people, four people responding to calls. So, I mean, we can put, we can change it if council so wishes, but I don't know if it's going to change anything on responses, because we can have, right now, we can go out and get 25 people on the books. If they come in and do the training and are able to respond, so they're not a liability to the city, that's a different story.
I was just throwing that in a suggestion-
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
-because it may be unnecessarily restrictive.
Absolutely. We can change that. There's not an issue. I'm, I'm just trying to explain, we have looked at a lot of different avenues, and that was one of the, the things that we did look into. And we did have a couple people from Weed that have come down and done 20, or, excuse me, 12-hour shifts here, because we don't have sleeping quarters, and then they go back home. And it just didn't work out for them because of the expense and being off work and being here on a weekend by themselves, and that's when there was only two paid people here. So, it might be different now, we can try it again, absolutely. We're open to anything at this point.
Do you have a marketing team?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a marketing team? Do you have someone who's actually doing vlogs, or showing what it is to be like on the job, and making your job look really exciting and thrilling, and?
Yes, most of, I don't do it. I am the worst person on a computer, probably in this whole room, so I have nothing to do with that. We do have the younger firefighters go up to the high school with PowerPoints, riding in the engine, going to code three to a structure fire, the helmet cams, they have done that, yes.
Yeah, PowerPoint's a little bit old-school for me.
Well, I, I don't know.
If you're really trying to reach the young, you're going to be doing a different presentation, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Giovanni wrote a great article in the paper, I think it was last week, about his experience as a volunteer. Hopefully, that was read by many. Did you see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Article, great article.
Well, I wish I had some suggestions, I don't, I don't know. Paul, do you have any questions or comments?
You know, I think we talked about this before, but sleeping quarters, and you have some restrictions on, on whether you can put those in or not, as I remember.
Yeah, the, the city does not have any facilities that we can even add on to a building to make sleeping quarters. We looked into some rental houses. The expense was not too bad when it was split between the district fire department and the city. The issue was, we had to have one full-time paid person that would be willing to stay in that house with the individuals that were in the sleeper program. So, that went away quickly. Everybody here has a family, unless we hired somebody just to watch the house. The other option would be, Chief Joyce has started working on an addition onto the district fire department with the board's approval, that might be moving forward soon. So, that could be an option for us.
In, in terms of sleeping quarters?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes.
Because I know there's some residential units right downtown.
Yes, and that's, we've looked into it, it's just the mentoring of the younger individuals was the issue.
I got you.
Because we, we had a sleeper program at one time at the other district station. We took everything out because it didn't meet OSHA's standards for one, so.
Jonathan or Marcus, do you want to talk now, or you want to wait?
Chief Mello.
I can't, I didn't hear you.
I'm going to come in, Dan.
Okay. So, you just tell me when you would like to welcome their public comment here as part of the presentation.
Yeah, I think we decided at the end, if that's okay.
At the end? Okay, that's fine, sure.
Yes.
Matt, if I may, I've got some other questions.
Absolutely.
I, do the volunteer firefighters get college credit for any of the time that they put in?
When they do see ease through us, yes, if, if they're on a department. I believe they get him, and this would be a question for either Jonathan or Rick, through the academy, I believe they get credit, don't they?
If they sign up for a ride-along time, we can, for work experience, they can receive credit.
And we addressed this issue sometime in the distant past, I want to say, maybe six years ago, the question came up as to whether the fire department should perhaps pull back on some of the medical calls, or continue to respond to 100%, both in terms of staffing, I think it was, and in terms of cost. You indicated that 65% of the call-outs are medical-related.
Yeah, and that's, this is for, that is further on in the, in this report.
Okay.
Yeah, what we're doing, Tim, is stopping-
Stopping at volunteers?
Yeah, stopping at each one, since it's such a long subject.
So- I, I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, moving on to the explorers. So, the explorers are typically between the ages of 15 and 17, so eighth grade through high school. We can train them in most aspects of the, in every day-to-day fire station duties. The issue is with insurance and the Boy Scouts of America program now, we cannot put them in harm's way, so they can't be on a nozzle, they can't be out on the freeway, well, they can't be on the interstate, they can't be on a highway. If we do take them and they don't take a firefighter seat, they have to stay in the engine, they have to be supervised 100% of the time, period. The Boy Scouts have changed their rules to where all of paid staff had to go to a 40-hour class for sexual harassment in one lump sum. We could not do that, so we have no explorer program anymore. It's a cadet program that's ran through the district's, district fire department's insurance. It's the same program, they can't be put in harm's way, they're not able to drive any firefighter vehicles, they have to be supervised when they're at the fire station. If we do have any females, there, we have to at least have one female advisor, which is very difficult to come by. The upside of this is, once they do turn 18, if they make it all the way through the program, we can put them right on the fire department, and they are ready to fight fire then. So, we can put them in harm's way, if you will. And any questions on the explorers?
How many do you have, Matt?
We have two, one's from McLeod, and one's here in Mount Shasta.
Good, okay.
All right, following up with that, I'm not sure I understood about the Boy Scout of America restrictions.
The, the biggest restriction was, is all five of us had to go to a 40-hour class in Portland in one day, or one week, to be able to have the program here. So, we changed it to a cadet program. So, that's all we have, it's exactly the same program, it's just not run by the Boy Scouts.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Okay? So, overtime pay policy, after our call-out occurs between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, that's a typical shift for everybody that works for the city Mount Shasta Fire Department, or Mount Shasta Fire Department, excuse me. 42% of those calls are accounted for within that timeframe. Our understanding of city policy is that hours, these hours will be paid at time and one half. We recommend a specific policy in relation to the fire department, as it has been a lack of clarification in the past regards on how, or when, or if firefighters do get paid for hours worked after their, their regular 10-hour shift. So, that's another part of this. Is there any questions for that?
You're finished with your overtime pay policy?
Correct.
Questions?
So, your question is, it sounds like there's lack of clarity as to whether there is time and a half or not, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And you'd like to get clarity on that?
Yes.
One way or the other, okay.
And you mentioned a 10-hour shift, I thought overtime went into effect after your 40.
Not here. No, we work 410s, actually, we work 424s, and that's another part of this.
So, you're saying overhead, overtime kicks in after you've had a shift of 10 hours, and you continue working?
Correct, or called in.
So, I'm familiar with the concept of exempt and non-exempt?
Correct.
I think I read somewhere in here that the two chiefs are exempt, which would mean that you wouldn't be entitled to overtime, but that everybody would be, battalion chief, captains on down.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Would you say, I believe I looked up on the internet, that exemption depends on the degree to which the person is doing administrative work. Could you estimate what, what percentage of the time you and Chief Joyce are do, actually doing administrative-executive level work?
Uh, not very often. I, I would say 30 hours.
30 out of 40?
Mm-hmm.
30 out of 40, you're doing admin?
At, at the most. That's on a big week.
Mm-hmm, okay. You, you list these as options, but it looks to me like you'd like to have everything considered here, and that there might be options under each category, such as mandatory training, what's considered mandatory training, and what would be considered part, considered eligible for overtime. That would be, you might want to look at some options around that.
Correct, and that, that will be, it's, the overtime and staffing should be left up to me, the department head. I want to come in with an MOU stating that I have the option of staying, you guys are staying, staying home until 11 o'clock on Wednesday for the mandatory training, that you're going to have to stay till 8 o'clock tonight. That's going to do away with the three hours of overtime.
I see.
That should be being paid now.
I see, okay.
That's, that's where that's coming from, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. So, I guess we, we'll save till the end what our, what our recommendations are.
Yes, and we have-
Okay.
They're, they're there at the end also.
Okay. I, I just want to comment that for me to clarify where I would stand with this, I'd really need to have an idea of what the cost to the city would be if we followed your recommendation here, letter, to the, to the, to the letter of the law, is that the expression?
Yes, and that's why we didn't do this, because there are so many different options, and there's one section in here that there's three at the minimum. I would like to see the council say, yes, bring back an MOU for those three, and we'll get to that at the end. The three options that are going to be the most cost-effective.
Okay, so, prior to writing an MOU, you would need to give us a little bit more staffing here to enable us to see the cost of these options-
Yes.
...before putting them into an MOU.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I heard some conflicting information. The question was, what percentage of your time do you spend in admin-executive work? And you said 30 out of 40 hours, so that's about 75%. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have no more questions, Paul or John? No? Okay, you want to move on?
Pay equality. So, the firefighters are placed in hazardous conditions daily. I apologize for my stuttering and flopping through this tonight. Therefore, pay rate should be equivalent to other departments that face a similar hazards. The most logistical way to do this, in our opinion, is to have a salary survey, and we believe the last one was done in 2005. And I know this is on a future agenda item, we just wanted to add that in there. We do believe that that would be the fairest way to go about this.
Questions, Matt? Comments? It is on a future agenda item, and I, I'm assuming if we did one, it would be a comparable study among Siskiyou County, or at least adjacent areas, and comparable population numbers, that sort of thing. And, and perhaps, and I don't know about this, but perhaps, Muriel, if we were to include other cities in this, they would be willing to contribute to the cost of having that work done? No?
This would be, if, if the council decides to do a salary survey, it'd be our recommendation that you hire a professional-
I can't hear you, Bruce, sorry.
It'd be our recommendation that you retain a professional company specializes in this, and they conduct a salary survey. They would obviously, excuse me, select similar-sized cities, departments with similar operational criteria, so they are clearly comparing apples to apples, and then report back to the city on their findings. And it would be my recommendation, if you're going to do a salary survey, that you do it for the city departments, which would include fire.
All city departments?
All city departments.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Okay, so, work schedule and staffing. If you would, if the council would please turn to page four of the, number eight, agenda item number eight, there is a few different options on staffing.
So, you've been on to page 34?
Uh, page 34.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what your guys' is, so.
Agenda page 34. You're talking about the different, the four different bullets?
Correct.
Okay.
So, often, only paid personnel are responding due to the lack of volunteers, which what we're trying to point out there is that in the middle of the night, summertime, the two paid people on duty, sometimes three, are the ones responding to any type of calls, and then having to work another shift. We do, the five paid personnel do work different shifts. We're covered Monday through, Sunday through Sunday, Monday through Mon, it says Sunday through Sunday. Again, paid personnel on call after hours are on call with no compensation. Again, it's an unwritten rule that has been in place since the paid people have started. So, you work your 10-hour shift, you go home, and you're on call from 6:00 PM until 8:00 AM the next morning with no compensation whatsoever, other than if you go out and get a little, some overtime for an hour call-out or what have you. And that's for the three, the battalion chief and the two captains. Again, the lack of staffing often requires the two chiefs to work extensive hours. We are not compensated for any overtime hours worked at all. We can work either 40 or 100 hours. If we're not compensated, we're the exempt employees in this whole thing. So, what we have come up with is a few options for the council to consider. And as continued with the current operation plan for the 10-hour shifts, there will be no on-call person after 6:00 PM. Again, I wanted to warn the council of the ISO rating could jump, which the lower you are, the better. We're a three now, if we go up to an eight, that can raise your insurance rates, or you may not be able to get homeowner's insurance at all. Go to a traditional fire department staffing, which is a 48 hours on and 96 off. traditional fire department staffing, which is a 48 hours on and 96 off. Again, this is not cost-effective. We would have to hire one to three people, looking right at $180,000. Create a separate pay schedule for filling normal vacancies, such as vacation, sick leave. This is a stipend pay. A lot of departments have gone to this, where they are paying $200 a day for a volunteer captain, somebody that is qualified to run the engine and run the fire department, to come in and work a 24-hour shift for $200 for the 24. Again, we explored a contract with Cal Fire. The official rough estimate was between eight, or excuse me, $700,000 and $800,000 annually. That's for two firefighters only. That doesn't include the cost of our equipment and/or housing. So again, that's unrealistic. They will not do anything, Cal Fire will not come in and just run, you know, 14 hours that we're not here. So if we work our 10-hour shift and they wanted to come in and work the 14, they said they cannot do that because of their bargaining unit. So it has to be a scheduled contract, which means that Cal Fire would run the fire department. Any questions?
Through the chair?
Sure.
Matt, in terms of bullet point three, the stipend, you indicate that there are some other communities that do that. It'd be helpful to me, and perhaps to other council members, if you could provide that information as to what other communities do it, and perhaps their experiences, pro and con?
Absolutely. Yes.
Including some estimate of cost?
Correct.
Obviously, that's going to be a factor as we work through the options here.
Yep. Absolutely. We can do that.
I have a question, too, on bullet number two, requiring one to three full-time personnel. Can you spell that out a little bit more? I mean, the difference between one and three to a department our size is huge, and to a budget our size, so.
Yeah, so what it would be, this is the regular staffing of a 48 on, 96 off. If we went to a 48 on, 72 off, it would just drop the number of employees we would need. So it depends on what council decided on, how many days we work compared to how many days we have off.
Can you understand that I wouldn't know how to-
Believe me.
-even lay out the options and to, I could probably respond to your alternatives.
It's very confusing. So we figured we would just put it in there, depending on, if council decided that you could hire one person, we would go back and just do that particular shift to hire one person to cover all the days, if that makes better sense. It's very confusing.
Other questions have been? Either of you two gentlemen to my left?
I have a question about the ISO ratings. How often is that done? Who does it?
Oh, go, sorry.
Yeah, so can you briefly explain?
Yeah, so we're, it's typically every 10 years. They have started doing it every three to five years. We were just rated, again, we dropped from an 8B and a 5, I believe, to a 4Y and a 3. So we actually went down because of the paid staff. So they're due to be back in two years.
Okay.
And it's the insurance service office that actually comes out and does our rating.
So we went down to last rating?
Correct.
Okay, which is good. Do you-
Very good.
Do you know how much percentage-wise that would lower the rates, even though I think they're going to go up statewide anyway?
It probably is from, due to the fires, but at this point, just to get insurance for a house is the most difficult part. It depends on the insurance company, but we dropped, I think it was 3%, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know all the stories behind the insurance business, but when we drop from a 5 to a 3, for each point, you drop a certain percentage money-wise.
I'll ask my insurance man.
Yeah, that's who I have to ask, too.
I'd just make a comment. To me, to raise the ISO rating would be unacceptable. I would be helpful, I think, I mean, to increase the number, right? We want to go, we want to stay or go down. So it would be helpful to me, as you do your staffing for the next level, if you, perhaps we could come up with some decision criteria that would help us evaluate the options. But one of them I would suggest is something about the ISO rating. So there's that. Is this the point at which we talk about the services that you are providing?
Yes, we can. Absolutely.
The full range of services, I think you-
That's the next item?
It's in this one, more than it is in anything else, I think.
Yeah, so the, so the department provides, it's an all-risk department. So we provide structured firefighting, wildland, auto extrication, medical aids, public assist, which varies from a wide range of helping somebody up off the floor to flu fires, to a number of things. Again, it's up to the council if they want to, you know, back off on what calls, like we were talking about earlier. If we don't run medical aids, that's 65% of the calls that we run out of the 1,000 calls we're doing a year now. Again, there's some departments that do that. From who we've talked to, they frown on it. The public frowned on it. When there's two people on the ambulance, they typically are going to call us anyways. It wouldn't be my suggestion to say that we're not going to respond to medical calls, or we're not going to respond to public assist, or whatever. We are an all-risk department. We do have a duty to act when the pager goes off. That's just my opinion. The council can change that if they want to. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thanks. And are there other departments in Siskiyou County that have a different policy?
No.
Everyone is an all-risk, is, respond to all services?
Yes.
And do you know of situations where councils decided otherwise, and the consequences were unacceptable?
Well, the only other, the one that I've seen that do not respond to every single call, and it's because of lack of manpower, is in Wairika. And they're trying to field those calls in the dispatch center, which is very difficult, because you only get a certain amount of information from the RP, or the caller, and it has come back to where, you know, if it's a general illness and they end up having a cardiac arrest. For a single patient, you know, you're talking six to eight people to establish an airway, do CPR, and transport to their emergency room.
If I may just follow up before going to you two gentlemen. So the presence of other ambulance services in town doesn't modify that, affect that? How does that work?
I'm sorry.
The responses, the other ambulance services, how does your response work with their response?
We work very close together. We are dispatched at the same time, if I'm understanding your question.
Not either or. It couldn't be either or.
It could be.
Could be.
If council wants to go that direction, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
What is your response time compared to the ambulance?
Typically, we are there first. We have an average response time of about three and a half minutes, which is fairly good for a combination department, and the amount of area that we do cover.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Matt, in terms of looking at the medical response and the training hours that you put in here, so on, has the department tried to encourage volunteers that might want to do the medical and not the fire, or the fire and not the medical, not do everything all together?
Yeah, we have those. Actually, there's people that only wanted to respond to medical aids. We tried in the past to do sign-up for a weekend shift. If you're going to be around, they'd be able to run the medical aids. But there is, they just, and we were talking about this today, actually, everybody has a purpose everywhere, and they can help out wherever they can, and some of them are just medical aids, some of them are just fires. Some are, they want to do everything. So we do have that in place. They can, they can pick and choose, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thinking outside the box a little bit, are there any fire departments that cooperate or partner with a medical group, so that some of those medical calls, for example, the public assist, could be done by a medical organization, a nonprofit?
Good question. I had no idea.
Just curious.
Just thinking out of the box, you ever, you know, no one wants to hear about taxes, but nobody wants their insurance rates to go up $300 to $400, $500 a year to increase the parcel tax to fund what you need to out of that. Have you pursued that avenue?
We have not pursued it. We have talked about it with the district board, and this is the first time we've talked.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, okay. It just makes sense to me. It's something maybe to pursue. If you can use the argument, if we don't do this, our insurance rates are going to go sky-high. And I mean, it's something to maybe pursue, get it out to the public a little bit. I don't know. It's just another way of looking at it.
Yes, we have talked to the district board. This is the first time it's been brought up in city council. That's an option we can look into, definitely.
Go ahead, Matt.
So the next thing here is funding and revenue. The department, the fire department does create its own revenue through rental of equipment. Last year, throughout the summer months, we rented out our Type III engines. We, approximately $50,000 recovery, some of the losses from EF recovery that the city council established in 2014, and it's right at $23,000 to date. And that's for unusual calls, hazmats on the highway, car accidents, that we can actually build back our time and our equipment to the insurance companies. Again, the association donates and does have a fundraiser. Last year alone, they donated approximately $20,000 to Mount Shasta Firefighters Association for thermal imaging cameras and some other needed equipment that either the city or the district couldn't afford. So is there any questions on that?
And that can be used for anything in your depart, that could be used to pay for anything?
What?
For equipment, salary, the funds that you're-
No, the-
Are they restricted?
Yes, the, well, yes. It goes into Measure A. All the funds we get back goes into Measure A funds, which is for purchase of major equipment.
Yeah, to further clarify on that, Matt, council still has to approve the expenditure, the disbursement. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
I guess a question for Muriel. Is this common practice to have these funds that fire departments bring in go into the general fund versus keeping them in the fire department budget? And if so, what are the consequences of making the shift that the chief is asking for?
The council can do whatever they'd like to do. In history, for the rental of equipment, that rental income has gone back into the equipment fund. Now, if you want to do something else, that's entirely up to you.
So historically, it has not gone into the general fund?
It goes into an equipment fund. And the fire department is asking that it go into an equipment fund appropriately spent only for fire equipment?
Yeah, that's what it does. We were just explaining what the fundraisers are and our revenue source. We do have a revenue source out there that we can change if need be for the rental of equipment. Again, this is not a guaranteed, or it is not guaranteed money. If you had a bad, or a good fire season, I guess you could say, where the engines aren't being rented, then we will not get any money that year.
I see. Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse you there. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so in conclusion, the biggest part is, we understand the budgetary constraints on the city. There's not a whole lot of viable options. What we'd like to see, at a minimum, is wages for existing staff be consistent with other public safety entities and departments. Overtime and standby pay be compensated. A policy for filling and compensating vacations due, or, excuse me, vacancies due to vacations and/or sick leave.
Could you say that again, please? It's difficult for me sometimes to hear when you're reading.
I'm sorry.
So just pause a little bit more between them.
So wages for existing staff to be consistent with other public safety entities and departments. Overtime and standby pay to be compensated. A policy for filling and compensating for vacancies due to vacation and/or sick leave. That's what we would like to see in an MOU come back to the city council.
We do have public comment for a couple folks, but go ahead.
Not interested in making a comment at this point, but a question. Want to follow up on what you were talking about earlier. And you said that there's a possibility of sleeping quarters being created at the district station. What's the timeframe for moving that forward, or for finding out whether that would move forward, and what input can the city have, if any, in that process?
We have not made it that far. Chief Joyce has actually drawn it up. We are going to bring it to an engineer and have it engineered, see what the cost is, and then we were going to bring it back to the city council and see if we either can split it, if the district board wanted to do that, and the city was agreeable to that. Again, with the sleeper program, it's not a save-all. It's a, you know, they're three or four months that they're in town, and they're at school most of the time. What we end up doing is giving them a place to live in turn for a 24, or I think it's three 24-hour shifts or two 24-hour shifts. Jonathan was the one that ran the sleeper program, so maybe he can speak to that a little better than I can.
And could that be as simple as a fifth wheel, or?
No, there's a lot of restrictions now because of dormitory rules. If we can take so many males and so many females, and that was the issue before, we could only take male students because we only had one bathroom, one changing area, that sort of thing. So there's a couple hurdles we got to get over. I believe Chief Joyce has got them worked out. So it's just in the first stage here, so.
All right.
We are working on it.
Okay. I wonder, are we ready for Marcus and/or Jonathan to share their thoughts?
Yeah, we'd like to have Jonathan come up and-
Good evening. My name's Jonathan Duncan. I work for the Mount Shasta Fire Department. I'm the battalion chief. I'm going to go over a little bit of the training that we do here at the fire department, paid as well as the volunteers. So as most of you know, on Wednesdays, all five paid staff are on from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 o'clock in the evening. On Wednesdays, we try to do something during the day with the paid staff, a training, whether it's an exercise, whether we go out. Lately, we've been going to Box Canyon Dam and doing pre-plans and working on things like that. Lately, we've been going to Box Canyon Dam and doing pre-plans and working on things like that. Um, Wednesday evenings are the weekly training night for everyone. Typically, we have a quarterly training schedule that we've already made with Dunsmere or surrounding departments. So, that way, when they come to our trainings in our jurisdiction, they learn our equipment, they learn our area, they learn our buildings. Same thing, we go to their areas, we learn their buildings, we learn their equipment. Helps us when we have those auto aid or mutual aid agreements to help them better serve their communities as well as them help us. We try and hold trainings on Saturdays for those who are unable to attend the Wednesday night trainings or for those members and cadets that just want more training. What types of calls do we train about, or correction, what types of training do we have and why? We must train on every type of emergency that we have from hazmat, medical aids, wildland fires, vehicle fires, structure fires, rope rescue, swift water, traffic collisions, public assist, just to name a few. Now with that, each one of those calls has many things that go with them. There's many scenarios that happen with each kind of those calls. Structure fire, what time of day is it? How big of building is it? Is there smoke and fire showing upon our arrival? How many engines do we have coming? Uh, rope rescue, how many patients do we have? How steep is it? Where are they? Do we have enough people coming to help us? Um, with that also, do we need to start thinking about air ambulances? So, that also goes for traffic collisions. So, this is all training that we take up. We do training with helicopters as frequently as possible. That's not always a viable situation, but we try to train with them as possible as we, as much as we can. Uh, we need to get our people, we have our people trained to where they can make split second life altering decisions. Um, those decisions not only affect ourselves or the ones around us, but the people that we're helping. Um, so with some of our training, some of our certificates are time sensitive. So, say for an EMT, every two years, you have to recertify your EMT. And it requires twenty-four hours of CE's for your state license. Hazmat's the same thing, is that I'm a hazmat tech, Cory's a hazmat tech. Every two years, we have to do twenty-four hours of CE. CE stands for continuing education. So, that's above and beyond just the normal Wednesday night trainings that we have to do this. Uh, CE's can be done sometimes online. Sometimes you have to travel out of the area to do the class, or sometimes it's stuff that we can hold here. Uh, the Mount Shasta Fire Department is a CE provider for medicals, for, sorry, for EMTs. So, when we do a medical training, we can provide our members and anybody else that joins with those continuing education hours to put towards their twenty-four hours they have to have every two years. Um, one thing that I like to tell everybody is train like your life, fellow firefighters, and the ones you're helping depend on it because it does. I make sure that everybody hears that. Has to be done. So, a little bit backstory, I'm gonna talk about last Monday. At approximately two twenty in the morning, we were dispatched to a structure fire. I responded, I arrived the same time, arrived, I arrived at scene the same time as Chief Mello. I continued to the Michelle Drive Station and picked up the water tender. We were committed at scene till a little after zero five hundred hours in the morning. We then returned to the station to clean up all the equipment used on the call. That took us till about six thirty. For those that you don't know, I also worked part-time as a plumber to supplement, supplement my income. I had to be at work at eight for that job. This is the same thing that we ask for our volunteers. Being part of a volunteer department takes much dedication from not only the members, but the member's family. On that call, ten members responded from the Mount Shasta Fire Department, five of which were paid staff. Three of those paid staff were actually on days off. Um, this is a lifestyle, it is a major commitment and investment, not only for the member, but for the department. It's not for everyone. In the last several years, it has proved to be tough decision or possibility for many. When I started in two thousand and three, I would get to the station hoping to find a seat on the engine. Now, when I respond to the station, I hope that someone's gonna be there to respond with me. From all the line of duty death reports that I've reviewed, it is apparent that with more training and education, many of these could have been prevented. I know that there is controversy over the removal of volunteers. This falls back on training. If someone is unable to make the required trainings, they become a liability to keep on the department. None of us here want this to hap, not, none of us here would like this to happen to anyone. For one to be an asset to the department depends on their availability to attend training. But there is always a job for those who want to contribute and commit to the department. So, I spoke about training requirements that we face and the time commitment that we must force to ensure that our folks can return to their normal life. And most importantly, their friends, their family, and their loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Marcus, would you like to come up now?
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Marcus Smith. I'm a captain with Mount Shasta Fire and one of the five paid staff members. I was going to explain to all of you what a typical shift for me is like. It's Sunday, eight AM to Thursday, eight AM. Uh, but honestly, there is no such thing as a typical shift. A normal day consists of having a talk with the crew that's going off shift and seeing what they accomplished or what needs to be finished from their shift. Uh, engine checkouts, station cleanups, then catching up on paperwork that couldn't be completed. As well as training, answering phone calls, or talking with the public. Normally, these tasks can be completed in a shift unless we get dispatched to a call. So, I'm gonna explain to you guys how my last shift went last Monday, Sunday, sorry. Sunday, February fourth was a normal day. Up to the afternoon, when we got dispatched to a medical around one thirty in the afternoon for an elderly male fall victim. Then another one around three thirty PM for an elderly female fall victim with a head injury. Six PM rolled around and I was off shift. Even though I worked my ten hours, I was then on call from six and one PM to seven fifty-nine AM. I got home, was able to eat dinner with my wife and daughter, watch a movie, then tuck my daughter in the bed. Monday shift started as we got dispatched to a structure fire at two twenty AM. Uh, like Jonathan said, ten members of the fire department responded, five of us were paid. After the fire was extinguished and we washed hose, air packs, and recomplimented the engine, it's now six thirty AM. I have enough time to run home, shower, change, and drop my daughter off at daycare before I had to be back at the station at eight. The rest of the day consisted of having an officer's meeting in the morning and assisting the chiefs with their fire investigation of the earlier fire. After being at the fire for a few hours, we returned back to the station and had lunch, followed by a meeting. Later on that afternoon, we were dispatched to assist Mount Shasta PD with removing a deceased person from a vehicle into a body bag. After working fourteen hours, it was time to go home, eat dinner, finally relax. Tuesday morning started around five fifteen AM when we got dispatched to a medical for an elderly lady with back pain. After that call, I went back home and was able to eat breakfast. After the officer's meeting, Chief sixteen hundred, Chief Matt and, or Chief Mello and Chief Joyce and myself. We went out to Box Canyon Dam and had a training session with CHP's H fourteen and Mike, he's a, a dam employee. I was there until eleven AM when we got dispatched to a medical for a disorientated female who had passed out. Then another medical for a two-year-old female with a high fever followed that one. The rest of the day involved more help with the fire investigation, got home after shift, was able to tuck my daughter in the bed. And then we got dispatched to a commercial fire in Dunsmere. Wednesday morning, we had one medical call at eight AM for a sixty-year-old female having difficulty breathing. We went back to the station, had our officer's meeting. Wednesdays are our longest days. We had multiple items that had to be caught up or completed and then had to make room for our training during the day. At six PM, we don't get to go home because we have our mandatory fire meetings and trainings with the rest of the department or volunteers. When I got home from training Wednesday night, my wife and daughter had already ate and were sleeping.
Thank you, Marcus. So, um, this item has gone. Okay, let's see, what are we doing here? We're asking for public comment. Are you finished, Matt, with your staff?
Um, there's Captain, uh, Tom Hastings that wanted to speak also.
Okay, I'd like to, um, I'd like to ask you to keep it brief. It's gone a fair, fairly long tonight. Um, it was very informative, but we do have, uh, some important things left on the agenda. Thank you, Tom.
I will make it as brief as I can. First introduction of, I am Tom Hastings and I am a volunteer firefighter. And I'll tell you a little bit about what it's like to be a volunteer. Uh, about ten years ago, I was visiting the district fire station about fourth of July, of course. And was asked if I'd like to join the fire department. I kinda laughed at the chief and I said, uh, I'm old. You really want this old guy running and burning buildings? He said, well, what we really need is people to drive the equipment and get the firefighters there. So, I said, well, if that's what you need, let's, let's give it a try. At that time, the district fire department had about twenty volunteers and the city was about thirty people. So, we had a fair amount of people to, to draw from. As I got into this, I quickly realized that I needed to know more to become a firefighter. Then, the more I learned, the more I wanted to learn. In addition to our weekly trainings that you heard about, I estimate that I've completed well over one thousand hours of specialized training so far, with more training up on the horizon. Since joining, I've achieved my goal of becoming a fire captain, but not everybody has the same type of goals that I do. To be a volunteer, I had to make a commitment of not only time to learn, but the willingness to drop whatever I'm doing to respond whenever I can. I say that because I'm not always available in my busy schedule to go on every call. As a volunteer, I have to balance my day with my family coming first, then dividing my time with commitments I have to several other organizations, most you're aware of. Sometimes I must prioritize what calls I go on based on other commitments. Being retired is the only way it makes it possible for me to even be part of this. One thing I know as a volunteer, being a firefighter is the most rewarding job you can do. Having the ability to help people you may or may not know in their moment of crisis is worth all the training and commitment. So far this year, I found myself on the roof of a home at four AM, putting out a flu fire, to extricating a young lady from her vehicle that was buried in the Manzanita along the side of the freeway. To helping a senior citizen that just needed help getting up in the middle of the night when they fall on the floor. To performing CPR on the pastor of my church. These are things that we've do. I have to ask you, all of you, what were you doing at two AM this morning, today, this morning? What I was doing at two AM was putting out a fire in the back of a neighbor's house in the city with a couple other firefighters, serving our community. Two AM call, got me home about three AM. Pretty wound up, I got to sleep about four AM. I was back up and at it again at eight o'clock. That's the life of a volunteer. We know, we don't know what's coming next. But I do know that we do make a difference in people's lives. With a decline of volunteers, I find myself sometimes having to respond in an engine by myself. Unheard of when I first joined this. During the recent fires in LA, it drew equipment from us. One of the problems it created was critical staffing levels, so we're all stepping up. That's kind of the downside of mutual aid agreements, but as we learned in weed, we have to respond when our neighbors call for us. We never know what that need will be for us. During that time that everyone was gone, we were dispatched what sounded like a routine fire, flu fire, in the middle of the night. Just like this morning's call, only three of us responded in two engines. That's all that came. I was first there and what I found was a fire that is, had extended into the roof structure of this home. I made immediate call for a chief officer for assistance and that call was followed by mutual aid call with Dunsmere and the state engines responding. Five engines and fifteen firefighters later, we got it put out, but it had substantial damage to the home, but we didn't lose it, we did save the home. As a volunteer, I'm also involved with association that you've heard about. All of us participate in the association, we do a lot of fundraising. Another thing we do on the association, we talked about social media. We do use social media, the volunteers auxiliary does that. And we put out, we have two or three Facebook pages that we use. We do try to attract interest, we do post things. We are limited to what we can post on there, but we do engage with social media and technology to try to track people in. And that's what some of us on the volunteer side do. Matter of fact, on that association, I want to remind all of you that we are having our dinner on the twenty-eighth of April, so mark your calendars, we're expecting to see you there. As the association, we will continue to fundraise and we will continue to try to provide those extra needs for the department. And also, we're looking at funding a scholarship to help entice volunteers to join and or be that sleeper. So, we are looking at every avenue possible to bringing in volunteers. These, of course, are just only a few examples of what we do on this department. What it's like to be a firefighter on this department is something that needs to be understood. This is a loyal group of individuals that will do anything for anyone. We work together, we socialize together, we depend on each other for our lives. You may see us hanging out, doing what appears to be fun games, but it's anything but that. It's team building, it's making sure you're okay after dealing with life and death. It's gaining the trust of one another, it's caring for one another. What we need you to understand tonight is that we ask a lot of our volunteer firefighters with little reward, other than the personal satisfaction of helping our community. Some of the proposals that Matt outlined tonight and that's in your pocket, that we're asking are to help us recruit and attach new volunteers into the program. Some of the other proposals are there to help make this a better career opportunity that choose to make this their full-time career. One of the things I want you to always remember, we are the insurance policy that no one wants to pay for, but we all know we must have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Is that it for your staff report? I see you, Rosalyn.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. So, I'll take public comment now?
Uh, Rosalyn McCoy, Mount Shasta. I think it was back in two thousand and fourteen and in the summer, you hired an extra firefighter for part-time. I was wondering if that position stayed on or do we have it budgeted for like an extra person to come on in the summertime? Where are we with that kind of budgeting?
No, it's a full-time position now.
Oh, so it just got turned into a full-time?
Correct. When the departments merged, the, all the money for the seasonal staff went to one full-time position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, I'd like to wrap this up as rapidly as possible. That was, uh, in my mind, a, 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 a very, very thorough, um, overview. I appreciate the work that went into it. Serious matters to weigh here. Uh, obviously, we have a very committed group of people and we're very fortunate to have you as employees and volunteers. So, for my benefit, Matt, would you please repeat the items you would like to have presented in anticipation of preparing a memorandum of understanding for our signature?
Yes, what we'd like to do is, uh, wages for existing staff to be consistent with other public safety entities and departments within the city. Overtime and standby time be compensated. A policy for filling and compensating for vacancies due to vacation and or sick leave.
Uh, is there a motion from, uh, council to proceed, direct staff about how to proceed?
You know, it sounds like there's more information that would be helpful to us before we make particular direction, give particular direction?
Yeah, I, I would include whatever you're requesting in terms of more addition, additional information as direction to staff?
So, I'm, I'm not ready to direct staff to enter into a memorandum of, of understanding at this point.
Right, right, but in anticipation of that, what are we directing staff to do for us in anticipation of the next move?
I would, speaking only for myself, I'd ask the chief to provide that additional information that we talked about. Uh, both that I talked about and other council members talked about. I think that'd be very helpful to us.
Uh, Mayor Mortar, if I might, perhaps the way to proceed in this, I think you've been given some very good background information. You're becoming more aware of the problems that we're facing in the fire department. Uh, this is an ongoing issue. This is an ongoing issue for many, many fire departments in the state and around the country. Perhaps giving direction to the staff, the fire department staff and the manager to meet, confer on these issues, develop position points and analysis. There are obviously budget considerations that have to be taken into consideration on these items that we'd be directed to put those either bring back to you as a further discussion item, so become more aware of the issue and what alternatives they are and what the cost of those alternatives would be.
Yeah, I'd like to interject here. We just finished budget, union negotiations with this department, correct?
Police department.
No, with the fire department, no?
We did negotiations with the police and the other departments.
But not with the fire department?
Correct.
So that's basically a motion, what you just said?
It was a recommendation.
That can be turned into a motion?
It certainly could, but yes.
Yeah, I would like to turn that into a motion, to direct staff and fire department to get together and start pursuing a resolution to this problem.
What I'd like to ask for, just to clarify that a bit, is to present also your best guess, Chief Joyce, at what it will cost to do the sleepover thing. What we can't afford to do, I think, is take these things one at a time. To the greatest extent possible, we need to consider all of them at once, so that we can decide what the most effective assistance can be to maintain our service, let alone improve it, just to keep it at a level that we, that our citizens expect from their taxes. So, I concur with that. I want to make sure that we include the volunteer sleepover thing, I want to make sure that we include a reference to a direction that we look at extending our recruitment for volunteers outside 96067. I want to have a looked at about why the background checks take the time they take, what are the options there? Sounds like that's a bottleneck. And I guess everything, look at the range of services as well. Is there anything we've missed, other than what's already been summarized by the chief?
Yeah, I heard that there's a helicopter use from time to time, and wondering, would drones be helpful in your program to help train and see aerial shots and to have a drone expert on staff?
We actually do.
You do? Okay, good, thanks.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table about...
I'd ask for clarification on the motion. I don't understand the motion as giving clear enough direction. I'm not sure what direction you're asking, that the motion is asking that we give the city manager or staff and the chief.
I would say that they come up with various solutions to our fire department's problem and start investigating it, and come back at the next council meeting and let us know the progress, and as we go through this process, we may change what we're looking for. But I think we need to get started now, and there's several items here that they can look at. The items were Chief Mello's four bullet point recommendations, to clarify those further, to have Muriel entertain financial possibilities from the city that we could possibly do. It's something that I feel we just need to start getting, to get going. So, I don't think that the motion has to be so specific that we're mentioning everything that we're looking at at this time, but to get started with it, with a few bullet items, and after we're, after they present those items, then we will branch off from there.
And I think it includes, I think the discussion has included options around wage equity, around overtime and standby, around filling in behind vacations, around temporary, what we can do with temporaries, if anything, including the sheltering.
If the motion is simply, please give us more information and some possible recommendations that we can consider.
With cost estimates, yeah.
Is obviously in that. Is that what your, is that what the motion is, basically?
Yes.
All right.
So is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'm willing to second that, because I think that this deserves and needs further discussion, needs further information.
Absolutely, yep.
And I think we'll be in a better place once we have that, but I think this was a very good start of discussion.
Any more discussion?
I just need some clarification, all right? So this is, the fire department staff members are not part of a collective bargaining unit, all right? I'm clear on that now. And apparently, your desire at MOU to be developed going forward, is there an MOU that is currently going to expire, or?
We don't have one in place.
Okay, all right. So, that would be a new thing.
Yes, very good.
And I'm not understanding the motion that I seconded to be suggesting that staff come back with an MOU at this point.
It's in preparation for a possible MOU, is that correct?
Maybe, maybe not, but come back with additional information and possibilities.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and I guess it's just gentlemen. Excellent discussion. We need to move now to, I thank you for your presence and your list careful attention and your presentations. I'd like to move to item number nine now, but Barbara, I'm gonna take a quick break,
You want to take a break, then?
It's up to you, Chris.
You have to go get some caffeine, right now?
I'm going to Starbucks.
In Warrick.
No, no, weed, it's not weed.
Okay, the mayor took a quick break, but she went ahead and said to continue with item nine.
So you can introduce item nine, you might want to read the agenda item in her absence?
Okay.
I think that's what she was asking you to do.
Okay, the agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action regarding the downtown enhancement advisory committee's recommendation to donate $1,000 to the Best of Mount Shasta event with conditions, and there's a report by city manager.
Thank you. For members of the council, this item was referred to by DAC, the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee, and their meeting of January 24th unanimously voted to recommend to city council that you appropriate a sum of $1,000 to the Best of Mount Shasta event, a private event, towards the retention of Mr. George Norrie, a radio commentator figured that would be a guest speaker. That was conditioned upon the Best of Mount Shasta raising the balance of the funds in order to pay for Mr. Norrie. That was their recommendation. If they did, in fact, raise those funds, the council could consider, would be willing to grant $1,000. Staff has reviewed this and has put it on the agenda for your consideration, given the fact that, one, it's a private organization, and that the scheduled event this year is being planned for the downtown of Mount Shasta, where they have normally held it at the park on the recreation district, and that it conflicts with the Trail Town event for Mount Shasta, same day, same place. Staff has recommended that you deny their request.
Okay, are there any questions to staff from the council?
Yes, thank you. Or maybe further clarification. Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee is designed to encourage and promote events in the downtown business district, as well as beautification, and things that will help the retail businesses downtown. The district is a defined district in the ordinance in which the property owners pay annually a fee into the district. So there's dedicated funds that go into that district. In addition, in the last two years, DAC, through the activities of its members and supporters, have raised funds through their individual efforts that have also gone into that dedicated fund. For example, DAC members and supporters handled the drinks booth for Winter Magic, and through their efforts, made about $1,500 at that booth. So, DAC felt that if the Best of Mount Shasta were to occur in the downtown business district at the times indicated, that it might be a good investment for the downtown area and for the community to use $1,000 of its funds, dedicated funds, to help bring George Norrie to Mount Shasta as part of the Best of Mount Shasta. It's my understanding that the Best of Mount Shasta did put in a events application to, for the 300 and 400 block of Mount Shasta, and that that application was submitted and pending prior to any application being submitted by the Mount Shasta Trail Town, if an application has been submitted for that activity, I don't know. This is one of those, so that's further information as to put things in context. Despite the fact that the downtown enhancement district is a defined district by ordinance, pays a set amount of money each year, that owners pay a set amount of money into the district funds for the specified purposes set forth in the ordinance, the downtown enhancement advisory committee cannot spend any of those funds without first coming to council and getting approval of council. So there was a unanimous vote at the committee level to spend $1,000 of those dedicated funds, subject, of course, to council approval.
So is it my understanding, then, that there's a, it looks like the event will not be downtown, so really, it doesn't meet the mission of DAC, no longer meets the mission of DAC, if it's not downtown?
Well, there's, you have basically two events trying to happen at the same time in the same place, the same spaces, so we're going to have to go through the events and coordinate them, or they end up at this time, I can't tell you.
Yeah, go ahead, Gaddy.
So, I'm sorry, I stepped out for a moment, but Barbara, did you just say that there's been, it's been concluded that it's not to be held downtown, or you said, "If it's not downtown, then it wouldn't be DAC funds"? The latter? Okay. Questions from, or questions?
And you should make comment.
Yes, public comment, sure. Questions of staff from council members?
Thank you. So, has it been determined, has staff denied the Best of Mount Shasta's application to...
No, they have not.
And has staff made a determination that the Best of Mount Shasta's event downtown would not be in the city's interest or the downtown's interest?
No, we have not.
Has staff made a determination that Mount Shasta Trail Town events would be inconsistent with the Best of Mount Shasta event?
Inconsistent is an interesting term. I don't think you have adequate space to do both events at the same time. The space that the two events are requesting is identical. You can't put the same, two groups in the same spot at the same time.
Well, I'd actually like to amend that, if I may. The Trail Town Event Committee, of which I'm a member, has not yet submitted an application. We're in the process of learning what is required there. At our meeting two weeks ago, our first meeting, two weeks ago, we threw out a few location options. We would like it to be downtown if possible, because, for the same reason, to encourage foot traffic among our businesses and create a downtown atmosphere, festive downtown atmosphere. However, since the word has started getting out about this event, this upcoming event, I have heard from a few downtown businesses who have concerns about, once again, closing off traffic on Mount Shasta Boulevard in the 300 and 400 blocks. That we do it 4th of July, we do it for Farmer's Market during, on those Mondays during those hours, and they're very concerned about doing it again on the 300 and 400 block in another weekend, for three days in July. And that made sense to me. One of the things we suggested, this is question? Okay, so this was just clarification, okay, I'll stop now. I do have more comments, but it is clarification that we are not, we are thinking about the 200 block possibly, but not the exact same location.
The item before the council is not to approve either of the events, the question is, do you want to spend, allocate $1,000 of public money to a private event?
It is correct that this is a nonprofit organization that is putting on the event, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and it's expected that that will bring people into the downtown business district?
We would hope so, yes.
And George Norrie is a nationally known, not only radio show host, but has a number of programs, or, I guess you don't call them programs, what do you call them? What do you call them? Videos on YouTube?
I would suggest that you save your arguments for the council conversation and keep your questions to staff, and so we can move on to public comment.
I do have a question. Is there a reason... Thank you, Barbara. Is there a reason why we're looking at whether or not to fund the $1,000 before we have processed the whole application? Why is this on the agenda before the application? Because, yeah...
This came to DIAC as a separate item, and they made a recommendation to council, so we forwarded to council for consideration.
I see. Does it make sense to anyone else that going ahead and agreeing to this funding is premature if we don't know whether the permit will be? Or whether... I believe I read somewhere that DIAC wanted to fund the $1,000, assuming that 20 grand... I think it said $20,000 was raised by the promoter of the event?
It's not $20,000. I think that may have been a typo or misunderstanding.
It was 10 or something?
But what DIAC... The DIAC motion was to use $1,000 of DIAC's funds to help bring George Norrie...
Understand.
...to this event, if the event is held downtown.
If it's held downtown.
My understanding is Andre Morgana needs to make arrangements with George Norrie this month, by the middle of the month. So the arrangements would be made prior to the next city council meeting, so if we can approve the $1,000 at this meeting on the condition...
I see, okay.
...then things can go into normal flow.
Thanks for explaining.
Yeah.
What was I going to say? I've forgotten.
Public comment.
Yeah, I guess public comment at this point. Public comment, please. Andrea?
Yes, please.
I'm glad this is open for discussion, and a couple of points that I had on it. One was to clarify that the amount... Right now, our obligation is to give to George Norrie the $5,000. And then, the balance of the money is in regard to taking care of him when he comes up here, his lodging and things like that, which we anticipate to get through the ticket sales that we have. So that part isn't due right now. The other thing is, if the other event wants to be at the same time, in reaching out to different people through city committees and stuff, the comment was, well, why couldn't they share it? And one thought was that the group, the travel assoc... I mean, that's wrong. The...
Trail.
Trail Association has an event Friday evening that's drawing... Oh, that isn't... Okay. Well, the one idea was, maybe they have one day and we have two days, or they have two days, we have one day, something like that. Our main day with George Norrie is Saturday, so that kind of is in the middle of the two days on both sides. We're more than open to doing something like that, that, you know, accommodates both situations. The other thing to mention is the concern in the financial impact from the staff was, this does not take into account public works, fire, and police department time in setting up road closures and ensuring adequate staff is on duty during the event. Well, I think that would occur for both events, both groups, not just our group. And we do have... I think we've addressed the security issues in our application, and that we would have some of our own people also available for all of that. And then, I did go around to the different businesses that were concerned about closing off their businesses, and to hear their comments, and there is a lot of complaining among the local businesses on that, those two rows, those two streets. And then, there was two ideas that came, and one came from one of the businesses, that we could have a coupon book that would offer something of discount at each of the businesses to draw the traffic in. The other point that I was making to them, as I'm representing 30 presenters and 50 vendors that are local people, and that one of the purposes of the Best of Mount Shasta has always been to improve the economic development of this group of people that are basically one step above the homeless. So when I was talking to the businesses, you know, and they'd have to, you know, put off three days of what they call their income in exchange for another group of citizenry that, you know, to give them a chance to benefit from that exposure, that added another, you know, bit of conversation to be considered. And then, the other thing that I did want to mention...
Quickly, Andrea, thank you.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there more public comment? Yes, thanks.
John Kennedy. I served on the downtown parking district for 15 years and helped collect that money that DIAC has, and Tim is right about the money actually being part of the Downtown Enhancement District, and they should be able to spend that money pretty much how they see fit. Right now, that's the most active group that I've seen to try to promote business downtown, and I think you should support them for what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Any other... Anything else from council members?
Just clarification. I think what I understand is, we're going to set aside... The idea is to set aside $1,000, but only if this event actually goes through and this personality comes and visits us, that we're obligated, is that correct, to pay anything? If the event gets canceled for any reason, or if the person's a no-show, then there's no $1,000.
That's correct.
Yep.
And the funds are not coming out of the general fund, they're coming out of designated funds for the business district.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that the council approve the unanimous decision of DIAC to conditionally fund $1,000, provided that it's for George Norrie and that the event take place in the downtown business district.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. I'd just like to say that I am a bit uncomfortable with the way the report came out, that if it's denied, it might be because of the other event. I'm not comfortable with that. There... It does cause some complications, but I don't... That's not, in my mind, the rationale that would be appropriate. If it were mine to do over again, I would ask that, and perhaps if for some reason it doesn't happen in the downtown this year, hopefully you could end up at City Park, but I would ask DIAC to consider doing a survey of all the businesses, specifically to ask some very pertinent questions about their support of the event, the foot traffic versus the road closure, all of that, on behalf of all the downtown businesses. I think it would be great information for us to have, and hopefully, the DIAC committee members might be willing to do that, I think, to help us understand about all the events that we have contemplated having downtown. Having said that, I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
All those opposed?
Nay, opposed.
To... Paul, did I hear your vote?
I'm for it.
You're for it. Okay, so the measure passes, that DIAC's $1,000 would be approved, assuming the event happens downtown and Mr. Norrie is able to attend. Thank you. Okay. That's it, except for the mid-year budget review. I think we're ready for the mid-year budget review. Yeah, long night. Muriel, may we have your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mortar and council members. Hopefully, you have your... Or have had time to study the mid-year budget. I'm not going to go through this line item by line item. I think it would take far too much time. You do have the opportunity at this point, however, to ask questions and see if there's other things that you know of between now and June 30th that would need to be addressed at this time.
Questions of Muriel?
Nothing real specific. I'm just wondering, overall, can you give me a sense of where you see the city going with this midterm budget?
Indeed.
Give me an overall picture.
Overall picture for the general fund, which is the main thrust here, is we've got... I'm projecting an additional $25,000 or thereabouts of income, and going through all of the expenses, I'm adding almost $100,000 in expenses to get through the end of the year. However, we still come out with a contingency reserve of almost 19%.
What's our typical contingency?
That's where we want to be. 15 is... Has been okay in the past. At this point, we're at almost 19, so I think we're in pretty good shape. It would be important to note the big items here. The big items for the general fund are some overtime in the police department, fire department, and dispatch department, which primarily is due to folks that have been out on medical leave that isn't associated with work. In other words, it's not workman's comp, but they had to take leave for various and sundry, other types of things, which I wouldn't discuss right now, the particulars of those individuals. However, it meant that other people had to pick up where those people weren't able to work, which means there's additional overtime and those sorts of things. The other bigger things there, in the central garage area, there were some large equipment repairs that have already occurred to the greater loader, dump truck, and the backhoe. So I'm asking for an additional $28,500 to cover the costs of that heavy equipment repair. We're fortunate that we have a person in the central garage that has the ability to do a lot of this work himself, saved us thousands and thousands of dollars. If we would have had to have sent some of these things out, we did have to send some out, but for the most part, he's able to do a lot of the work himself, and it saves us a great deal of money, and we have a better, you know, a better fleet for that. That said, the rest of that... That's just for the general fund. If you have anything else specific, I'd be happy to discuss that with you at this point.
I'm just a little surprised, because I thought we started in the red this year, by a little bit, and even though our revenue... We have some additional income, but our expenses are higher than we predicted. I was expecting a little bit further into the red, but you're saying...
Well, our pre... With the previous budget, we were at almost, by the time it was all said and done, we were at 22% for contingency reserve, so...
And we thought that we would run a deficit of around $34,000?
And right now, I'm at 144.
Is council travel for...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did you want to discuss the enterprise funds?
If you'd like. The enterprise funds, as far as the new rate study, that most people would probably be interested in, that there... Our targeted amounts are coming along nicely. For the sewer fund, by the time we get to the point where we'd like to do our construction, we'll be in a good position to do that. However, one of the things I'm asking for in the enterprise fund is, in the water fund and sewer fund in particular, is that we may be a little bit short in the sewer fund and would like to fund some of the work through a short-term loan from the water fund. I'm not exactly sure where that's going to... Where it's going to wind up. We're thinking somewhere around $31,000, short, just for a short-term loan at the LIF rate, just to bridge the gap there.
Perhaps you can further explain. We have done those sorts of loans, inter-fund loans.
Can you speak a little closer to my...
Yes. You might want to explain that we've done those sort of inter-fund loans in the past and how that works out.
We have. In fact, there's still one outstanding for the parking district, as we talked about before, for the construction of a parking lot, that we still have four or five years left on. That said, we've done it many times in the past as a measure to actually pay less, instead of going out somewhere for a loan, especially a loan, a small amount of a loan. It doesn't make sense to go out and pay more for something when we can actually loan it from a fund who has the money and then pay that loan the LIF interest rate, which would be the fair interest rate to... For borrowing, if that makes sense.
You're saying, keep the money within the city?
Within the city, let the city borrow...
Loan from one fund to the other.
From one, inter-fund, yes.
So while we're on the subject, I'm trying to understand what's here. The current user fees have... I assume the 13 grand that you have in here, under wastewater, that surely that's not reflecting of the rate increase? Where is the revenue coming from?
What I'm saying, when I do that, I'm looking at the project... Our projections, where we first set the budget.
Right. No, I understand what you just said, and I'm all for that.
No, no, no. I'm saying the change, the change that I've asked for, if I've increased the budget for revenue in an enterprise area, we're actually getting more than we anticipated, which would be something, for instance, I believe in the sewer fund, it's late fees. The late fees have actually gone up a bit, so I'm asking for an increase in anticipated revenue there.
And what I'm asking for is, if you could tell me how much we have collected from the rate increase in... From water and for wastewater? I didn't know... I just couldn't tell from the documentation.
I don't have it in front of me. I don't have that particular one.
It's not a... It's not a separate breakout?
No.
I see.
I'm not going to... I'm not going to know from last year, I don't have that particular report to tell you where it was last year with the old rate to where it is this year with the new rate, because we budgeted using the new rate.
Right.
So what we're looking at at this point is the budget.
No, I understand, so...
Not a variance report.
Okay. So under wastewater, for instance, you've got revenues, current user fees of $13,000. Am I looking at the wrong thing here? And the wastewater operations fund, and I'm sorry that page numbers aren't here to help us.
Yeah, what's your... I think that you're looking at, the adopted budget, user fees are $551,500. I'm asking for $14,000 more to get to $565,500.
Okay. I'm... Oh, there it is. Okay. That's underwater.
I'm sorry.
And then wastewater?
Wastewater operations, $1,088,600, and I'm not asking for any increase in that. That's right on target.
And those... And that million dollars?
The other miscellaneous revenues there are for things like the resort.
The what?
The resort.
I see, okay.
Those types of things, yeah.
Okay, so the hike in rates that we... Okay. So the, so the hike in rates that we accrued, occurred is included, in this case, in the $1,088,000?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's, I just couldn't find it.
That's okay.
Okay. Can you tell me quickly just how the gas tax is distributed across the funds? Just, you know, maybe, you know, I had, what I realized as I looked at the budget this time, I looked at it in a little bit more detail than I have in the past, and I realized that there's a whole lot that I don't know. And I had talked to city manager about possibly doing a workshop, a short primer on the budgeting process. For those of us who haven't asked in detail, and I apologize for not having gotten to you before today.
Well, I think that's an excellent idea, but not necessarily for this particular, for the mid-year budget review.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's an excellent idea for the development of the 1819 budget.
Yes. That's, that's my request, that that be considered?
Well, that would be certainly a part of the budgeting process, and I'd be happy to do that. There are basically five different gas tax funds that can be used for a lot of different things, a lot of road maintenance, road construction, sidewalks, you know, all of those, all of those sorts of things. So.
Yeah.
Engineering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can see that, and I just, I didn't know if that was, if it was up to us to distribute them that way, or if in the, in the legislation, it calls for how it's split.
It, yeah, but they're different sect, actually, the money comes from different laws that have been passed and different, different types of things. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But what we spend it on can be for any variety of different things.
Is $10,000 for council travel common when we have, I assume that part of that relatively large amount comes from having had three new council members? Or is this, is this an average amount for travel?
No. Actually, you had some, some offsetting revenue for that, because you had some, some grants that came through. One was $7,500 for the economic, it was an economic summit or something like that. And then there was another amount for the workshop that you did.
The Gigabit City, the 2018, or 2017 Gigabit City Conference in Kansas City. We sent five people, but that was fully funded by a grant that we received.
Yeah. We're looking at the, you're looking at the expense side. So basically, the expense was offset by an increase in revenue somewhere else. But no, it wasn't a typical year. So, and you've already, you've actually previously approved those, the expenses for that.
I just request that we add perhaps an expected expense of no more than $300 for my travel associated with being on the League of Cities Division Board. I have two meetings between now and the end of the fiscal year. I don't think I'll spend that much, but it'd be safe to put it in there.
That's easy to do.
And one other question I have. If we were to set aside for money for a grant match, if we were successful at acquiring a grant of some sort, often, I understand that there would be some local match. Do we, have we ever had a category where we would contribute local city funds toward a match on a grant?
I would say it depends. It depends on what the grant is for. Brownfield, for instance, the match for that might be from the general fund, or it may be from the Economic Enhancement Fund, which is the money that was miscellaneous income from CDBG, that it's lost its federal status, so it can be used for anything that you would like. So it depends. Another thing that happens with matches is it could also be matched through city labor or city equipment or other, you know, in-kind type service. So if we can do that, that reduces the actual cash that would have to come from anywhere. So it depends on the grant source.
So are we anticipating applying for any grant for which we might want to set aside a bit for a local match in the rest of the fiscal year?
Not to my knowledge. Perhaps in the next fiscal, fiscal year, but not to my knowledge in this year. If there is, I would need to know that and address it here.
City Mayor, that sounds like a question that might, you might be able to address.
I'm sorry.
Are there, are, do we anticipate any, submitting any grant applications between now and June 30th for which there might be matching funds required?
So one we have pending is a fire grant. One we have pending that has been submitted is for a fire grant, and that requires a 5% matching, approximately $12,000. And that will probably happen within this fiscal year.
And I think the mayor was asking, out of what funds would that come, the matching funds?
It'd have to come out of fire funds.
What was your answer?
Fire department funds.
Come out of fire department funds.
Would that be basically Measure A funds?
Not if it's equipment. Unless it's, if it's equipment, that's fine. Is it equipment? Okay, then yes, that's where it would come.
Right. And I, is Jedi working on any other grant applications on behalf of the city, whether it's infrastructure grants or anything else?
Actually, Jedi is not working.
Oh, not Jedi, Great Northern, excuse me.
Actually, Ms. Wilson is working.
All right. Well, I thought we had a contract with Paula Reynolds at Great, or Great Northern, where Paula Reynolds might be helping us with grants as well. So.
She is, she has provided help to us already, and we are pursuing grants, and she will provide additional help if necessary.
So in terms of the mayor's question of, might the city be requesting or submitting any grant applications between now and June 30th for anything? Mentioned fire.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything.
Potential infrastructure grant applications?
So we have that one pending. That's all that we're, we have pending now. And I would doubt that we have any others that would come due in this fiscal year.
Well, I'd like to.
Which ends June 30th.
Okay. I'd just like to go on record, if I may, that we consider setting aside something, some, you've done, you do a miraculous job of moving money around, Muriel. I'm amazed at the number of changes that you manage here. It just, I think it would be a smart thing to set aside something, somewhere, for a local match for grant applications for next year, for next year. Just, I'm just throwing that out as an idea so that I'm not, so someone else remembers it besides me.
And let me ask both the finance director and city manager about funds for interns. Whether they are local interns or interns that are imported from elsewhere, whether they're high school interns or college interns in public works, planning, perhaps even SEDAC, whatever, where might there be funding for that? We have a SEDAC meeting, for example, coming up later this week, and again next month. If SEDAC were to try to enlist some students from high school or college for special projects, SEDAC doesn't have a budget, so we would turn to the city council for that. Would that be something that would come out of general fund, out of the CBDG fund, or what?
I'm sorry, but it's starting to sound like we need to sit down and have, and really look at our priorities, broad scope, because now I'm hearing piecemeal again. I think we really need to sit down and say, if we have any extra money, where are our top priorities?
All right. That's, I agree with you, Barbara, and that's why I suggested we have a workshop to help us understand the most appropriate place to make these suggestions and the most appropriate time, and what the staff relationship is with all of that. So perhaps I made a mistake in mentioning the grants. I just, I knew that Kathy was starting to work on some, and I wanted to make sure we had something in there now if we needed it. But I, but I do agree, rather than go through budget ideas about what we could be doing, we need, we need to have this workshop prior to the next budget cycle. And if there are no, my vote would be, if there are no present intern proposals to work with, then we need not budget it at this point. That's my, that's my thought for this, for the purposes of this discussion, and that we incorporate this kind of discussion about process, budgeting process, in the workshop that we hold.
I thought the mayor's question was, where is the flexibility in the budget from which funds might come? That's how I interpreted your question. I was trying to follow up on your question.
Yeah. No, I was speaking specifically to grants, and then, and then you, then you brought in the subject of internships, and then someone else might be interested in something else, and I just don't want this discussion to just continue to go on with, in a conceptual way, rather than responding specifically to what's in the mid-year.
Let me specifically ask finance director about what the restrictions are on the CDBG funding, that those program funds that came back in, I think it was in excess of $35,000 this year, as you indicated in your report. The law has changed on that. What's the current law in terms of usage of those funds?
That would be the Economic Enhancement Fund. And what I would say, if you're talking about interns, if you're talking about grants, I'd need to know specifically what program you want to do, what particular project you want to do, and what the, who would be filling it, and what the cost would be. I'd rather have some more specifics than, rather than to just throw a dollar amount into a line item.
No, I understand that, but the CDBG funds can be used for economic development, not limited to low income?
That's, well, it's, they're no longer CDBG funds. That's probably an important distinction. We have CDBG grant funds. We have CDBG program income, in which case we've received more than $35,000 in loan proceeds that have to stay in the program income fund to be used for CDBG programs. And we have the Economic Enhancement Fund, which is a fund that was developed because we had some years that we didn't have more than $35,000 in program income, which we could then use for whatever we wanted to use for, and we created the Economic Enhancement Fund to be used for whatever purposes the council so desires.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So is there any public comment on the budget, mid-year budget review? Seeing none, I'd like to.
I have, I have one more, one more thing I wanted to make sure that got entered into this mid-year budget. I'd like to add an additional $29,000 to the Water Improvement Fund as we move forward in finishing the design for Tank One. We also need to add an additional $25,000 for the bid execution portion of that. So I had added an amount for, to finish the design portion of it, but I needed to add another $29,000 there to, to get to where we needed to be, to have those expenses approved to June 30th.
And for clarification, that extra $29,000 would come from where?
Water Improvement Fund.
Okay. So it would stay within the fund?
Correct.
It'd just be, doesn't have a purpose within the fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Given that amendment, so that would be an amendment to what is shown. So.
Plus the 300 that you, that you had mentioned before. So.
Which I would support.
Yeah. So I'm making changes as we go along here. If you have things you need to change, they'll be incorporated and.
Okay, very good.
When it goes to the final, you know, when you sign things and stuff, it'll, it'll reflect that.
Okay, thank you. And Kathy, what resolution number is this? 08? 08. John, are you prepared?
Sure. I'll move that the city council adopt Resolution CCR-18-08, a resolution of the City of Mount Shasta adopting a revised operating budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, with last-minute adjustments just mentioned.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much, Muriel.
Thank you, council.
Okay. I would like to suggest that we move the connection fee extension discussion to the future agenda topics rather than handle it now, and instead adjourn this portion of meeting before going to closed session. Are there any disagreements about that?
There are other things in the meeting before closed session, or you want to do this after?
No, I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget that connection fee item.
Do you want to table item 7F?
I want to table 7F and deal with it in a future agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So council reports on attendance at outside meetings?
I'll go first. I missed the DEAC meeting wherein they put forth the $1,000 grant idea. I had to miss it due to snow conditions. And then I was not able to attend the LTAC meeting last week, a week, a week ago, because I was here at the city council meeting.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Paul? None? Barbara?
We had an informal ATAC meeting. Mike Quinn has developed a city map that he would like the council to, council to look at. I need some guidance as far as how you want to proceed. Do I send that map to Catherine and then ask her to distribute it? She's, he's asking that the council kind of give it an okay. There's been no formal process. There's no quorum, so he has continued to work.
Correct.
And he's developed a downtown map in collaboration with Land Trust, the Chamber, and.
Trail Association, I think. Yeah.
Yeah. It's basically to help people navigate downtown.
Yeah. So has he met with Bruce yet? Pope?
I don't know. I don't know if he has.
So I think it's important that it go through city staff first, and then we decide even if it needs to come to council for approval.
Okay. So I'll send it to Catherine and then.
Yeah. We can talk and talk about it at the future agenda meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think that would be the correct way to go through staff, and then maps could be put in our boxes.
Okay. So you guys can comment on it. Okay.
And, go ahead.
Yeah. And then I went to the Trail Forest Service meeting that was developing trails to go from the gateway to the Nordic Center. Very exciting meeting. I went to the 9:00 AM hearing about the weed water issue, just because I'm curious what's going on in parallel with water at our neighboring town. And it did come out of that meeting that, that former Rose, well, the Roseburg Mill is a superfund site, so that came out of that. Also went to the KS Wild Siskiyou Film Festival, the 16th Annual. Excellent event up there in Grand Spas.
Tim?
I, last week, I attended the California Housing Crisis Conference, February 8th, in Sacramento. It was an all-day conference sponsored by Capital Weekly, which, Capital Weekly in open California. There were a number, there were four different panels with three or four panelists at each panel, and then the keynote speaker was.